I'm going to report that there's -- the board took no reportable actions in closed session. And we are at item B, approval of the minutes. We've got meeting 13. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, I'll take a motion. Dr. Mann.
Yes, I do have a question. Since nothing was up on the website about this meeting, and I understand probably why there were no audios, there were no anything on it, I couldn't check this. But on page 4K, it says, "Follow-up on PCC outreach and satellite campus strategy. Dr. Rocha discussed briefing on the distributed Pasadena City College services among the district." On the district -- well, that's not even grammatical. But anyway, I don't remember that. What I recall is the board said, "It's too late, we're not going to take this up." So, I mean, that was -- that's my correction. And I think it should read that the board did not take this matter up because it was too late or something to that effect. I don't remember any summary, and I couldn't check it because there was nothing up. And I would be willing to hold that correction until we get, you know, either the audio or the video available, but that's my recollection.
How's everybody else's recollection?
That is mine as well, actually. President Martin, that we did not take that item up.
Yeah, to be helpful, in fact, I specifically recall that it was on there in terms of satellite strategy, that there was an agenda item, and that we decided because of the press of time not to, you know, give time to the discussion.
Okay, so can we make that change?
The most accurate thing. And so I think that the language there was just basically to the effect that we decided not to take that issue up. So my recollection is in accord with yours.
Okay, so we should just change it to say the board decided not to defer this to a later meeting or something to that effect.
We will take that as the first correction to the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I hope -- did you get that, Cindy? Okay, I think I saw Mr. Baum next, corrections, additions?
On page five, I have to edit what it says. First off, it's -- Mr. Fellow wasn't here, so my name is Jeffrey Baum, is on there. And it says Anthony Baum. So it should simply say, and if you could take this verbatim, "Attended the Board of Governors' meeting and visited Eric Skinner and Barry Russell in the Chancellor's office, who expressed their appreciation for the steps the district is taking to address the impacts of the schedule change on student transfer."
Okay, did we get that one? And Mr. Simon.
The very first one would be that I'm not a mister, but then on page--
Give us a page on that one, is that right, the beginning?
Page first, the first page.
Yeah, okay.
And then on page three, under item I, on the motion of Mr. Fraser seconded by Mr. Baum, the sentence seems to end, "The board voted by unanimous vote to approve the enhancing emergency preparedness--
Ms. Brown, here.
-- budget proposal, just to be clear on what exactly it was that we approved."
Here.
And if it was my recollection, it was the budget proposal that was presented.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm getting a second look here. There was a budget part to this, for sure.
Well, again, I think Cindy is just scribing this, you know, as accurately as she can. There's, you know, a video record of it. Certainly, that Mr. Fraser is right, that you could say enhancing emergency preparedness proposal--
That's fine.
That's right.
Because that's what the board acted on.
Right, on the proposal.
So are we good with that one, too? You're ready? Okay, I don't see any more white lights, so we're going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second by Dr. Mann. All in favor, advisory vote, and all in favor. And we have one abstention, I think. Is that yellow an abstention?
Yeah.
So, okay. So that we have an affirmative advisory vote, and it carries six affirmative and one abstention. We are to introductions and recognitions, and a couple exciting things here this evening. Dr. Rocha, we'll let you help us with these introductions.
Yeah, happy news ask, call to the podium, Professor Kathy Way, who was the leader of the recent extraordinary conference called the ICICE, the International Conference on Internet Chinese Education, which I attended. And here, we just wanted to not only honor and thank Professor Way for this really significant event, but also to convey just a small amount of information about it, because it was such a significant turning point. And I'd just turn to Trustee Wa, if she would add any comments to the introduction.
Well, I think I reported on the last board meeting, but, you know, it was really a phenomenal conference. There were representatives from 15 countries all over the world who came, and it was the first time this conference has ever been held outside of Taiwan. So certainly a gemstone in the crown of PCC in terms of our conferences and global representation.
Thank you very much for the compliments. I would first of all like to introduce my dean, because he actually supported me all the time for this event, and my colleague, Eugenia Wu. Today, we come over here, is to actually give you a little report about this ICICE event. I would like to have Dr. Young to start it.
Since we want to keep this brief, why don't you just--
Okay. Okay, well, since we want to entertain everyone, so we're going to show the video first. Can we have a very small clip of video first? You can see that they are coming to Pasadena. First of all, they are actually, we are having the welcome reception at the City Hall on July 11. And this event was hosted by PCC, Pasadena Sister City Committee, and Chinese Language Teacher Association of Southern California. And there are over 300 participants from different countries, from 15 countries, coming to attend this conference. Altogether, there are 66 individual and nine panel presentations, with over 100 presenters from, of course, again, 15 countries. And we would also like to thank Dr. Bell's office to give us tremendous support, financial support on this conference as well. The event started on July 12, and we would like to especially thank our supporting teams, who are really marvelous staff, that, for example, facility service, IA catering service, the staging service was marvelous, and the campus police, public relations office, and campus youth, Ms. Marcy Embers. With all your support and guidance, we can, we could proudly present PCC and our friendship to our guests. This is Dr. Rocha. And we have our student supports here, and then the altogether 32 students coming over every day from 8:00 to 6:00 to help facilitating all the different classrooms. There are four different lecture halls to be used in this, all the four events, crabbing lounge, circadiums, Harbison Hall, R122, and C33. And all the people very happy about the attendance, about the involvement of this event. And I also like to tell you what the participants had said about this conference. And everybody unanimously agreed that this is one of the best conferences they have ever attended. And during the closing ceremony, word being whispered around was, now that PCC has hosted such a fantastic event, nobody else would dare to host the next ICICE conference. So I'd like to end our report by echoing what Dr. Bell has said in his speech at the welcome reception in Pasadena City Hall the day before the conference, that the ICICE had picked the best city, the best college to host this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
So finally, I really, we, the Chinese language faculty, would really like to thank our administrators, Dr. Rocha, Dr. Bell, Vice President Miller, Trustee Wa, and all the trustees, and my division dean, Dr. Yang, for all your support. And thank you all, the rest of our marvelous faculty supporting teams to help us to finish this one. It was a great success. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we know that behind all that is a tremendous amount of work. And I want to thank you for a tremendous amount of work that I know really is what makes that as sensational as it was. And Trustee Wa, anything, any color you want to add to all this? I think you were--
Well, I have to say, you know, I think one of the things that the board would have really appreciated seeing was the little song and dance. And I know we just didn't have enough time to get to it, but the field elementary from PUSD has a Chinese immersion class from grade one to four. And most of those kids are non-Asian, and they all spoke Mandarin fluently. And it was really just a real tribute to how much work that all of our educators are doing in our community.
So thank you, thanks again. Well done. Do we have a second presentation?
We do briefly. I don't think Mr. Chahenian, Chris, our good friend Chris Chahenian is here tonight. He was unable to join us. But we did want to enter into this official record, this Board of Trustees' special recognition for Chris Chahenian, who is the president, the chair of the Armenian Community Coalition here in Pasadena. And I'll just read the final paragraph, President Martin. "On this day, August 21, 2013, the Pasadena-area Community College District Board of Trustees would like to thank Chris for the leadership, for his leadership role in the Pasadena community and as a friend of Pasadena City College. We also look forward to continuing our relationship and partnership by establishing a new President's Armenian Advisory Committee." So I'm sorry that Chris couldn't join us, but we will see to it that this gets to him.
And we'll just show, it's a really nice certificate with a beautiful-- No, we won't.
What does have a beautiful?
It really is very nice, yeah. Very nice for the camera, so we'll look forward to making sure he gets that. We are at public comment on non-agenda items. Oh, wait, you have one more.
I have one more. We do, we have--
Off agenda, okay.
And a very significant one. And that is, we should acknowledge--
Absolutely.
-- congratulate the new president of the Associated Students, Jordan Orozco. Jordan.
Jordan, congratulations. You always will have a time to speak when we get to shared governance, but if you'd like to have some preliminary remarks, we'd love to hear from you.
Definitely. I just want to say thank you so much to everybody in the audience, all administration and Board of Trustees as well. I'm really excited to get, I'm really looking forward to working with you in the near future, in this year. John Fraser, unfortunately, had to step out and resign, but I definitely took up the office, and I'm really excited to continue this year with community-based leadership. And I'm really looking forward to working with all of you, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay.
That's it.
Good. Public comment on non-agenda items. Our crack team has been working here with the yellow cards, and we'll call a few people up. And it looks like, I don't, we have enough for everybody to have the full five minutes tonight, if necessary? How many you got? So, okay, so if you try to keep it to four minutes tonight, is what we need. So if you'll call up a few names, and we usually call a few ahead, so whoever's speaking, the other one can queue up and get ready.
Okay, so the first speaker would be Melissa Michelson, and to be followed by Jose Castillo, and then Anna Torres.
Hello. Last August, this board, at Mr. Thompson's motion, changed Board Policy 1680 regarding the valuation of the president. You have just conducted the president's evaluation behind closed doors, but next year, the rest of the campus will finally participate. Every CEO of large organizations has his or her probationary period. I've never heard of one that is four years long, but, and if that is the norm, colleges, I think, ought to seriously reconsider the length of probation. Different from faculty, the president of a college can potentially lead and affect thousands of people's lives in just one year, which can be detrimental or beneficial. Collectively, the students, faculty, and staff have a lot more interaction, one-on-one and another settings, with the president of a college, more than the Board of Trustees. Four years is a long time for our voices to be shut out, and perhaps if there had been wider participation earlier in this probationary time, some of the conflicts and crises could have been sorted out sooner or even avoided, and we would be in a much better, different place than we are now. Even though Dr. Rocha said last month at the board meeting that we have mounted more sections this year at a lower cost than PCC's history, some questions remain. What is the student count, and what is that cost? How many sections were canceled because of low enrollment? I'm sure you know that since 2010, the total annual FTEs have dropped from 24,375 to 20,218 in 2012, 2013, a difference of 4,157 FTEs. Likewise, last semester has been the lowest enrolled FTE semester in 10 years, with only 9,838 FTE students. The two spring and fall semesters prior each reached over 10,000. In fact, the entire last academic year had the lowest FTEs in 17 years, with 20,219 FTEs. And only in 1996 to 97 did the total annual FTEs drop below last year's number to 19,747. I'm not saying any of this is causal, but another important piece of data to consider would be success and retention, but we can save that for another time. Another problem with the effectiveness of the presidential evaluation procedure is that anonymous and unattributed comments will not be included. I understand why that is stipulated, but for those that get picked to evaluate the president, those without tenure, especially staff, and even some with tenure, may not be comfortable giving open and honest feedback, or much less participate, if they cannot remain anonymous. Therefore, unattributed and anonymous feedback should be included, even if you wish to collect both anonymous and attributed feedback. Finally, the conflict of interest in Board Policy 1680 is startling, and having recently been to China simply does not sound very American to me. How can the person being evaluated be able to pick the agent that will be evaluating him or her? Where are the checks and balances that this country prides itself on? In short, I ask that you put on your next agenda a reevaluation and amendment of the Policy 1680 to reduce the probationary time of PCC presidents, make it more inclusive, and make it less biased. Thank you.
Hi, I'm a student here at PCC. My name is Jose Castillo. And the fact that I'm here reading this is because I'm already assuming that Dr. Rocha has been given another stellar evaluation by the board. And I don't have confidence that the board is doing the right thing based on what's been going on around us here at PCC. Despite my friends telling me, "What's the point? They don't listen," I'm hoping that tonight, not only will you listen, but you'll act. Time and time again, the board mentions that better communication from the administration is necessary with students. Let me tell you, even after three years of being here, this is still not happening with me. So far, there's not been an open forum for the board-- excuse me, for the board and the administration to talk to us about winter cancellation, its benefits, its drawbacks, the data, the rationale, et cetera. 10-minute presentation by the president to the board is not my idea of communication with students. Actually, I only found out through the courier that there would be no winter intercession this year, and last year as well. Also, at the very end of the spring two, extended spring, summer one, I don't know yet what it actually is, I found out that it technically wasn't a spring term through an email, even though I had registered for a spring class. The latest is that a few weeks ago, I found out on my own that PCC's financial aid cap, not FAFSA's, is now 78 units and no longer 90. I sought advice from counselors, and none of the ones that I spoke to knew what I was talking about. When a student has to inform three academic counselors that financial aid criteria has changed in the school, and seek information from three financial clerks and one financial aid advisor, there is something definitely wrong with the communication down the chain of command here. It wasn't until a few days ago that I saw something on PCC's financial aid website, and only today I got some clarity on the subject, only because I contacted my trustee representative. I should not have to contact a Board of Trustee representative in order to get assistance on an issue that a school department should have knowledge of. To make things worse, not only did people not know what was going on, but I was also misinformed. Only those who have to work to put themselves through school will truly know how much stress every latest development can cause. I went through several weeks of uncertainty about my schedule, the completion of my goals, my transfer, and even my continuing as a student at PCC. I want to go to East LA College now, because things around here just look like they're being run like a circus. And I think it's the board's job, technically, to ensure that things are run correctly. I just don't see it happening. To be clear, though, this isn't only about financial aid. I don't think it's their fault. It's just simply the communication that the board is saying needs to happen is not happening. As a student, I'm concerned with my status, my transfer, and the completion of my goals. As a voter and a taxpayer, I'm concerned with the $800,000 mistake that was of the spring two semester.
30 seconds.
I'd like to end this with a story. When I was in Germany training, I can't remember if it was before or after we came back from Afghanistan, we were doing a bunker complex training, and the leaders went on their leaders' recon. My first sergeant was an observer, and on the after-action review, he came back and he said, "While your leaders were out there, I had to remind them that they're over there taking their sweet time, getting their differences together, and they have soldiers out there in the snow, freezing their butts off in the foxholes. So they need to hurry up, and then you get their stuff done, and go over there and lead them." And I say that to you guys right now. While you guys are over there doing whatever it is you're doing, not running things the way you're supposed to be running them--
Thank you.
You got students in the foxholes. Thank you.
Anna Torres, followed by F. Spencer, major.
Good evening. My name is Anna Torres, you've seen me here before. Just to let you know, as a disclaimer and stuff, I'm not coming up here and public comment again and again, just so I can harass you guys. I'm not a student here anymore, and I'm an alumni. But my brother still goes here, and when he goes through problems at this college, I need to do everything I can to help him. A recent problem that happened was with fall registration, he needed a math course, which was Math 7A. He tried to get the course on his smartphone through the internet access, and it told him, "No, you need a prerequisite." But the problem was, the Lancer Point system told him the prerequisite was 5A. So he goes and registers for a 5A course without having the prerequisites for a 7A course. And when I found about that, I thought, okay, that's crazy. So we go on a normal computer on the website, and it says, "No, the prerequisite's geometry." But it still allowed him to get the prerequisite of higher-level course. I don't know how this happened, I don't know how this gets into the registration system, but Lancer Point needs to be fixed in that way, and many other ways that I'm hearing from other students. So he can't get a math course right now, because by the time he got back, all the lower-level courses were filled, so he's stuck with lower units this semester. So anyways, just to fix Lancer Point. And another thing I wanted to comment on was the last Board of Trustees' meeting, I didn't get to comment on it because it was after public comment and everything, but there were less chairs in here than ever before that I had seen when a higher crowd was expected at a meeting. And, you know, I saw people weren't being let in and stuff, so if the venue could be arranged to, we have proper seating for when more attendance is expected, then please do so. Thank you.
F. Spencer, followed by Eduardo Cairo.
Good evening. I just came here to speak with you guys. I tried making a public comment for the closed session. I was over by the table. My apologies, I should have spoke up. Believe me, I'm not a shy person, I'll definitely speak next time. What I'd like to say is, is I have been in a combat scenario like his, and before I ever put my ducks in a row and send my troops out there to the field, I make sure I have the best hypothesis out there. The best hypothesis out there would be to get a survey, or some way to get the facility involved with your evaluation process. More statistics means more information, which means a better way of understanding. Correct? So that is my comment to you. I believe there is a more strategic way of letting things go, there is a more strategic way of planning events, and I've seen a business ran, and I don't think this one's being ran correctly. Thank you.
That's it? Is that it? Okay.
I didn't get to put a card in, because I've never been to one before.
No, I'm sorry. We, I kind of made a deal about it right before I hit the gavel even, so we're moving, sorry, we're moving on to approval of the consent items. We're moving to approval of the consent items. I'm going to look around the board. Can entertain a motion for them all, and then pick up topics. Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion.
Right.
A second? Is there a second before we pick up topics, or you want to?
Yeah, because I have a few I'd like to pull.
I'm sorry?
I have a few I would like to pull for separate voting.
I'm trying to see if we have a second on the motion, but, okay, so it dies for lack of a second, we'll go into discussion, and then maybe we'll have a motion at the end. Mr. Fraser, I think I saw you first.
Yeah, I'd like to pull 26P, 27P for a separate vote.
Okay. Let me get on my game here. 26P, 27P. Okay. Mr. Thompson, anything you want pulled? Trustee Wa.
I'd like to pull 28B and 30B.
28B?
Thought I had a third one.
And 30B, well, we'll, we got time, you'll get it.
All right.
Mr. Trustee Fellow.
I'm fine, thank you.
Trustee Brown.
24P.
24--
P as in Paul.
P as in Paul.
And 30B, and 27B.
30B and 27B, as in boy, right?
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Mann?
21B.
21B. And Trustee Baum?
No more.
President Martin?
Yeah.
I'd also like to pull 26P.
26P. P as in Paul, right?
As in Paul.
Okay, that one we got. Okay, so we're going to start with 21B contracts. I didn't make a note who wanted to talk about that, but--
I did.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I'm on page three of three, under Fund 01, unrestricted funds. There is an approval of El Monte School District, an amount of $975,047-- There is an approval of El Monte School District, an amount of $975,047 over three years. It seems to me like this is a significant amount, and it is to provide use of facilities for classrooms and support space to provide for the growing needs of students in the district. And I think that this should not have been a consent item. Anything with this much money and this major of change should have been on so the board could have discussed it. I don't recall any discussion that the board has had where we have specifically said that we want to make this kind of a commitment to a facility out in the community. I mean, this is not like renting four rooms in a church basement. This is a major commitment. It's almost a million dollars. So I'd like to see it. I think we should discuss it separately.
Okay. Why don't we discuss it? And we can have a separate vote if you wish.
I want a separate vote on it.
Okay, but well, let's start by discussing it. So we had some, a lot of background material in our packet on this. Would you like a--
I'd like--
Would you like the superintendent to make a presentation?
No, first of all, I'd like to begin the discussion since I've pulled it. There has been obviously quite some discussion in the community about this, and the feedback that I have received from my constituents is they are opposed to this. They think it is not a good idea. Now, we have the Community Education Center in district, whatever district it is I'm in, in that district. And they feel that it is a-- well, first of all, they said, "We heard that you're putting a satellite in every district." I said, "No, no, we haven't even discussed going off-campus." And we did meet and we did visit this facility, the El Monte Union Adult School. We met, but there was no discussion, no action. And I really think that if anything-- this is a significant-- this is a significant move, and I think we should have had more discussion before it came up. I understand that the reason why we're doing this is so we can offer more classes, but I think this is a major change, and I was extremely upset that there was no opportunity really to have a discussion, involve the community. This is the kind of thing that we might have a public open session on because it affects the whole district. That's what I wanted to say.
I'm looking to the other trustees who-- if you had a light on about other items, let's focus on this one and then get it done, and then we'll pick up the next one. So is your-- are your lights pertinent to this topic, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I think I saw Mr. Baum next, and I guess we'll just have trustee discussion without a superintendent report because it's-- there is documents in here.
And just for the record, so this is 325 a year for the next three years. What do we get for that $325,000 a year?
So that does kind of beg a brief report from the administration on this. So why don't you give us an overview?
Right. For that, I would ask you to turn to the information we provided that provides the complete--
Where is that?
Budget and other-- it's in your folder.
It was in the front.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller. And, you know, I'd also point out, of course, that we prepare the agenda in the full light of day with the president of the board of trustees, and so the decision was made to, you know, put it on in this way. But I'd also say that the administration strongly supports this as a way to increase service to students who would otherwise not be served, and that it's an important budget item since next time on September 4th, we'll be approving the budget. And since we have been given a much higher FTS target, and we have maximized all resources at the main campus, that for the high-demand classes that some of the students say that they can't get, this is what we'll be offering there. So there's a complete budget workup there, and Mr. Miller and staff have been working hard on that. I would only say that we're focusing here on a classroom rental short-term agreement, three years for a facility of that nature. $300,000 a year for, I think, 15 or 16 classrooms is a very, very reasonable price. And if we did not rent these classrooms, we would come to the board and ask to rent classrooms someplace else anyway. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Miller.
Well, I believe Dr. Rocha has summarized many of the key points. I would point out that you did receive some information that spells out from a fiscal point of view, the income expense associated with this. From a programmatic point of view, the manner in which this site would be used to support the increased number of transfers and degrees and certificate programs. I would also reference my narrative budget report where on page five, we talk about the very significant FTS targets that we've got, not only in terms of what we have to accomplish for 1314, but also in terms of how we have to capture 18.4% of the workload reduction that occurred in 1112, and that we have just this year to recapture that. So we need space to do that. Dr. Bell and I and other members of the staff have looked at the opportunity that the Rosemead site presents to us, and not only does it provide the opportunity to help us with our goals for transfer degree certificates, but it also allows us to provide services in a portion of the district that we don't provide those services in right now. And Rio Hondo, for many, many years, has had the advantage of, if you will, siphoning off those students in that area, and we basically seeded that--
I understand why we're-- I didn't ask for that. I just-- the main question I asked is, "What are we getting for $325,000 a year?"
What you're getting specifically, Trustee Baum.
And I've gone through this, so I mean-- but I was just-- it's hard to kind of distill. Right now, we're asking-- you're asking us to commit contractually $325,000 a year for three years.
That's correct.
What specifically will the district get for that?
You will get 15 to 18-- actually, you will get a total of 18 classroom facilities in one building, two in others, a series of administrative offices. We'll have some computer lab opportunities over there. We will be able to offer, if you will, a full complement of courses in that part of the community.
So, and so as I look at it, which I don't think we've kind of announced to the public, there is a facility down on Rosemead Avenue in-- is it in El Monte or it's in Rosemead?
It's in Rosemead. It's a Rosemead adult school.
That has 15 classrooms. We all visited that at a board meeting, and it was-- and it's in very good shape, almost ready for occupancy.
That's correct.
And that-- and what I'm just realizing here, too, it says there's 30,000 square feet and 90 cents a square foot, which if you went out on the open market, that's a pretty good deal.
That's a very good deal, yes, sir.
And we get 15 classrooms, administrative-- where's the other building that you were mentioning?
The other building is what's known as the Bentil property. It is adjacent to this, to this property. It provides additional parking, and it will provide two additional classrooms.
Is it in the same--
It's literally right next door. It's just east.
And we get all that parking, too, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, and then-- but you've made a proposal, too, that there's going to be additional improvement costs that we're going to need to outfit the classrooms to our standards.
That's correct. And these expenses for that Bentil property are built into this budget, this proposal that you have before you.
Right. And then-- and we're doing this now because you have-- you're in charge of a facilities master planning process.
Correct.
Theoretically, an expansion like this, we would have said, "Oh, as part of our long-range plan, we want to set satellite centers in various areas and agree on a strategic direction." Why are we doing this now when we haven't even decided what our facilities' needs are going to be?
The district has an income exigency, an income emergency tied to FTS revenue, and in order to achieve that FTS goal, we need to have access to more facilities. And this opportunity presented itself approximately three months ago, give or take. And given the situation with the state right now and the funding situation of Prop 30, et cetera, this is an opportunity to help us achieve our aggressive FTS goals.
So my last question. So there's a unique window of opportunities, what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
The facilities made available to us in an area that we've long talked about expanding. My question-- and I've talked-- we've talked also about this. Don't we-- can't we manage our schedule on the campus itself more effectively to offer night, evening, weekend classes to expand the inventory of instructional space? Because that's also something that I don't think we've done or had a serious conversation about, that classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays at noon, classes on Fridays, classes on Saturdays. You know, are we maximizing our current resources effectively enough?
Trustee Baum, that's a very good point, and in fact, what we're doing in addition to looking at the possibility of utilizing the Rosemead site is in fact doing that, looking at extending a weekend college and utilizing the current inventory of classrooms here on Colorado campus and the CEC facility on Foothill much more effectively. However, even at maximizing that based upon how our current classes are scheduled, we would not be able to meet the FTS goals that we're looking at. That window of opportunity will be too short for us to be able to do it.
And what-- I just want to-- why aren't we be able to meet FTS goals last year, and we have-- but not this year with the same inventory?
First of all, our FTS goals for 1314 are higher, as provided to us by the state. We have an opportunity to-- we have a growth-- or what the chancellor Harris and superintendent and president Rocha call "access." The new term for growth is "access." So the chancellor's office is providing us higher targets, provide more access to students. And then secondly, we have this urgent need to recapture the 1112 workload reduction that was taken away from us 1112. And the state is basically saying that you have five or six years to do that, but you say, "Use it or lose it." And this year, they are saying it's 18.4%. So if you don't-- if we don't get that, that's gone.
But I'm just saying, five years ago, we had 22,000 FTS with it and without using this space. You know, what were we doing more efficiently then that we're not doing now?
Well, you know, it would be-- it would be hard to answer that question in a definitive way because we haven't quite looked at that-- looked at that answer-- or looked at that question. But it seems to me that either we were more efficient back then or we were using more outside sites. I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, over the-- one reason is, is over the time-- okay, two things. We've cut a large number of classes and class sizes have been reduced, okay? So we're actually running less efficiently than we were three or four years ago because class sizes have been reduced and made smaller. That causes us to run more sections. The other thing is that we have shifted because of the Student Success Task Force. We have shifted the number of sections that we have offered from-- you recall a presentation that Crystal Corosson's made from low-demand courses to the so-called top 20 or 25, okay? And the problem with offering the most high-demand classes, you know, the English, math, social science, is that we do have a governor in terms of the number of rooms that are available at the times that faculty are available to teach, normally Monday through Thursday from 9:00 AM to about 2:00 PM. We have a block scheduling problem, as you know, which we are, you know, fixing and will be fixed at Rosemead if we rent the classrooms there, that the classes overlap with each other so that the students are not able to easily get classes. And that's-- there's a reason for that from the compression of the hours and so on, or not compressing the hours when the weeks were compressed. So for a variety of reasons, including the budget cuts, the FTS was low, much lower than it was, say, at the high tide of 2008, 2009. We're having to offer a lot more of the classes of-- that are lower class size. English, math-- English and math are-- and some of the basic skills courses are very, very low class sizes, but that's what all the students-- or at least the majority of the students need. And so those are some of the reasons. And the final reason is, is that I don't think anybody in the state expected for the targets-- you know, the FTS talkers, you just said 18%. I mean, last year, you know, we have never gotten a target in one year that has increased by 18%. So those are some of the reasons.
And I think Dr. Rocha is absolutely correct on all of those. And I think that, just as a reminder, you will recall that in-- at the high-tide mark of FTS, we were not getting funded for all those FTS, but we were desperately trying to provide access to students. So the district spent many millions of dollars that it didn't get paid for. So they were literally hanging from the rafters, and I think Dr. Rocha is absolutely correct in that. And which caused a whole number of other issues, I might add.
Okay. Did that answer your questions? Okay, I'm going to let shared governance people speak, and then I'm going to take it back to the board and let the board keep going, so.
Thank you very much. To address trustee Baum's response, the-- under the academic senate, there is an ad hoc committee. It's called the Ad Hoc Committee on Scheduling. It is being co-chaired by Dr. Paul Gero and Dr. Ariano, and they're working to address that precise issue that you mentioned. So hopefully, they're able to come up with a solution to try to make scheduling more effective for everyone. And my second point is, if that-- if we were to look at the number of classes that had their NCNs lowered, I don't think it'll add up to the lower number of FTEs. So to say that because of the lowering of the NCNs, our FTE-- we're not meeting our FTEs, I think would be erroneous. It could be part of the problem, but not a major one. And unless we know how many classes there would be, I don't-- I think it would be wrong to make that statement. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. All right. In the thing here, I think trustee Fraser is next, and then Mr. Thompson, and trustee one, and--
I'll be last.
So go ahead.
You know, it's a shame we're having this discussion under the auspices of a consent item. I do wish that this was--
You know, I will take responsibility for that. I think that's a good point, and I just think you're right. And I think you're right, and I'll try to do better.
Well, thank you. I wasn't trying to drive to that point, but--
No, I mean--
You know, I think--
No use discussing that because I think you're right, and as president, I'll try to do better, and so-- but here we are, so let's do it.
So here we are. And, you know, when I read the item, I was very much under the belief that what we were doing was renting some instructional space, not the whole facility or near the whole facility. You know, I do think that if we are going to discuss renting a whole facility and moving some significant operations there, that is a much larger discussion than-- you know, we do have very consistently contracts with school districts to rent space. I think that's-- and for class space specifically. And if we wanted to do that, that's fine. I think there's a difference between that and renting out, you know, support space, parking, all of these other sort of accoutrements that come with operating a satellite campus. And so I'm concerned about doing it under this. When I thought it was just classrooms, I was a lot more comfortable, but having heard some of the answers tonight and sort of what the plan is with this item, I do think we need to have more public consultation because quite frankly, I don't know what I think about it. I don't know whether we've really had the full discussion on it, and so I'm hopeful that we can have that and really decide then what we do with this. My question would be, you know, we had the problem with spring two becoming summer one, and the summer one became summer one again for FTE recapturement. Am I correct in that? Did that not help us recapture the FTEs that we needed to catch? And then my second question to follow that would be, you know, full semester starting next week, how could we get the center functional at any time to be able to meaningfully capture FTEs?
I can respond to both those questions. First of all, trustee Fraser, thank you for bringing up that point. In order to maximize the revenue to the district-- the 1314 revenue to the district, it was necessary to borrow FTEs from 1314 to make the 1213, in order-- in other words, to take advantage of the full opportunities that the state chancellor's office provided us. So we did that. So, and we took most of summer one of, I believe, Ms. Corosson, and-- in order to accomplish a very important goal. So another reason to go forward with the Rosemead request is to provide further opportunity to generate FTEs so that we are not-- so that we can pay back, if you will, what we borrowed and be able to go forward in the appropriate way. Secondly, the proposal, which you have a copy of in your packet, so I think you have a full copy of this, and I hope you had a chance to review it. The fall will be late-start courses. So these courses will not start until roughly mid-October, eight-week, and then we'll enter in with a full spring semester. So should the board approve this, then we will move forward with all of the preparations and be ready for a late-start beginning.
And so having heard that, I would just say I think we should bring this back as a full item for action.
Yeah, in some ways, I feel like I need to respond to part of that question because I work with the superintendent on the agenda, and obviously, for a long time on this board, every time you're-- Yeah, in some ways, I feel like I need to respond to part of that question, because I work with the superintendent on the agenda, and obviously, for a long time on this board, every time you're ever in an election, there's always this talk of satellites. And, which was very realistic two years ago, and I'm not sure how much conversation, but I've heard buzz now. As this opportunity presented itself, it was my goal, and you saw it on the last meeting, and you know these meetings have been going really late and long and hard with lots of topics every single time. But I felt like, well, we need to, you know, a few shots over the bow, we need to work through this, we need to try to get our hand in line over there with El Monte so we don't lose it, work through the greater strategy, and slowly land this thing on the deck. Lo and behold, budgets, new information comes out, new things come out that say, not only is this the potential of an opportunity that would fulfill a long-time need and desire and, in a, to a community that's probably socio-economically challenged and needs it as much as any other part of the district. But lo and behold, all of a sudden, there's an urgency on our part financially, why we need to do it sooner. And we should have agendized it as a topic and not a, not a C thing. When this thing came down and the superintendent's recommending, we're starting now, and we want to do this for fall, I was shocked. Because my preliminary discussions was, the first time we saw the place, oh yeah, this is part of greater strategy, this is great, but we'll never do it for fall. But reality changes when circumstances change and the agenda has changed to meet some of those needs and to try to have to ramp this up a little faster than even, and so to be honest with you, I'm shocked that it was ready to come up now. But there was real good reasons, not just for Rosemeat's sake, that the administration said, we need to bring this up now, we've got to get something going. So that kind of answers the question as to why, and last time we didn't talk about it and all that, and that's true. Because, you know, we were on a nice, slow, even trajectory to get there, but the dynamics have changed.
Just to follow that up, just so that the public understands the rapidity, because we were shocked, okay? Mr. Miller, okay, how long ago was it that you had a meeting with the chancellors, you know, and the CBOs and got the final FTS revenue target for the college?
August sixth.
August?
Sixth.
August the sixth. And when, Mr. Miller, will we have to deliver to the board a final budget approved for the thirteen fourteen fiscal year?
September fourth.
September the fourth. So, believe me, you know, we would, we were not expecting when the chancellor said, oh my God, okay, how about eighteen percent? And we were not, you know, we would love to lope through this too, but if we don't do this, we also need to get the revenue someplace else. And as Dean Olivo knows, students out there still cannot get their math courses, because we're tapped out for classrooms here. So if we don't get the classrooms here, we'll have to get them someplace else. And if we don't get them someplace else, okay, it would, it would not be possible to rent all these classrooms in PUSD, because it's, in effect, we would be competing against ourselves for, for students who are already in, you know, close by the main campus. Then we will have to, we need to know tonight so that we can give to the board at its next meeting, two weeks from tonight, an accurate budget, whether this is in or out. So I confirm Mr. Martin's.
Yeah, so in honesty, had we known tonight, if we knew tonight, if we knew last meeting what we knew tonight, we wouldn't have pulled that topic. We would have had at least some kind of more conceptual topic on the satellite issue, not just here at Rosemeat, but as we eventually want to do in other diverse places where we see there's needs and opportunities as they're presented. So, again, I want to apologize that that just didn't come down the way I wish it would have come down too, but there was some of it that was beyond anybody's control here, so that's just part of that. Okay, so I wanted to answer that, and it's really Mr. Thompson's turn.
Well, I want, just to follow up on some of the things that Mr. Fraser was talking about there. I mean, in, in the past, and I think still do, we've used rooms in San Marino High School, we've used rooms in John Muir, PHS, et cetera. So what's the relative cost of using more local facilities as opposed to branching out to El Monte or, or Rosemeat? And the second thing, and if you can answer that, fine. If not, I'd like to have the answer before we go forward on this. And, and so, Mr. Miller said he got information on this on August the sixth. I would note that we were scheduled to have a board meeting, I believe, on August the seventh. We canceled that meeting, and so here we are tonight in a panic mode. And I just think that that really doesn't add up, and I'd like to have the additional information before we're forced to vote on this issue.
Well, I think that both Mr. Miller and Dr. Bell and Dean Ariano could, could amplify this, but I'd say, basically this from enrollment, most of, even if renting a classroom in a school that's already existing is a very different thing, as the deans know. Sending faculty into existing operating high schools or middle schools or elementary schools is a very different thing than sending faculty into a facility that you have control over. This is one of the reasons why we don't do more dual enrollment and concurrent enrollment, because there are many, many logistical, political, faculty, and other issues that need to be resolved just to run a single class in a single high school. And then, again, since we knew the new budget information on August sixth, to expect that, you know, it'd be difficult for staff, even if those rooms were available, to, to pull all this together in time for an approved budget. The second thing has to do with enrollment management strategy, and I think Mr. Miller has already spoken to this. All of the students who are, who are close by the main campus are already in our system. To offer more classes at the main campus or nearby the main campus would not put our service out to a whole new population of students who have never already been appealed to. Every single one of our local high schools has already had max outreach, max, you know, recruitment and so on. So we have essentially tapped the enrollment market in the close-by campus. Now, we don't know, I cannot tell anyone whether Rosemeat will be the, you know, the, the great answer. We think, based on the numbers, that a rental of three hundred and some odd thousand dollars is a very reasonable price to pay to find out whether students in that area who would not come to this campus. We showed the statistics before, Rosemeat High, very few students in that area of our district come up here. You may think it's only eight or nine miles, it might as well be eighty or ninety miles. They just don't come up here. And so they go to other colleges on our border, even students who are in our district high school. So, yes, I would say this is an experiment. We don't have a better experiment to run, because all the other experiments have been run. And we'd also say, finally, this. Our experience has been, you know, and I'm, I'm looking at Dean Douglas and Dean Ulmer, and I don't know if Charlie is here. That every single English and math and, you know, core science course that we are able to open on this ca, class, that we put out into the Lancerport system fills, okay? But we have no capability because of adding too much more, because Dean Douglas needs not just a classroom but a lab. And those faculty schedules for the fall are, and spring for that matter, are fixed. Dean Ulmer has, those English courses are four-unit courses, so you not only need a classroom, but you need to assign faculty and students and remand them to the one-unit tutoring lab. So we are completely tapped out on this campus for classrooms in English, math, course science, and so on. Now, we can run, we can run classes, more classes at night, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, and you, and indeed, we are, more than we ever have. But that is also an issue that we need to move through the deans and the faculty and make sure that we can adjust schedules. Even adjuncts can't just be switched to nights online and weekends. And our enrollment experience is that students generally, it's not, the faculty are not bad guys, they're not, you know, we, most students want to come between nine AM and two PM, because that's the, you know, the most popular hours. So they can get their classes out of the way and go on with their employment or their lives or so on and so forth. So we do feel, and it's a, you know, it's a bit of a, it's not a gamble, I don't think in any way, but I think it's a bit of an enrollment management experiment, that every single English, math, core social science, core general education and transfer course that we open there will fill to capacity. And that's the experiment that we are trying. And if that experiment works, then not only have we maximized our revenue and helped our budget for everyone, including faculty, staff, and all employees, but if we do that, we'll maximize our revenue and serve, literally, thousands of students that this district has never served before. So I do, with Mr. Martin, agree, believe me. If we could take three, three or four months with this, we would. Now, I also think that there's another factor that is, is not in here, and forgive me, I hope this picks up some of the questions. There's something that we haven't talked about in, in light of this discussion that you are all aware of, and that is a earthquake in the area of adult education. We almost never talk about it. But this year, the earth moved because the governor proposed that all adult education be moved to community colleges, okay? I actually supported that bill, but that bill was stopped in its original form, and instead, what was put in was planning grants, okay, for up to twenty-five million dollars for districts like ours, and there are not many of them, okay? There's only about ten districts in the state that are seriously involved in adult education the way we are at CEC, so that we can get a hold of some of this twenty-five million dollars to do planning, because the following year, the state plans to appropriate three hundred million dollars to adult education. Now, into the bargain of seeing if we can enroll more students and get our revenue this year, okay, we have had, you know, partnership, amicable, you met Nick Salerno, the superintendent of, of Rosemeat Temple City. And what we want to do is this will, is this a precondition? No. I'm not saying that Nick is saying you rent our place and, or else we won't talk to you. But we have a relation, a special relationship with this school district that enables us to acquire a planning grant and a, and more money for next year. And some of the adult education offerings that we would offer would go there. So I want to be upfront about that. And as I say, you know, sometimes, you know, you, you want to take more time, but, you know, we, we're in the situation where, so.
Okay, I think we're at, I think you were completed, trustee Thompson, right, your remarks? Or do you want to add more?
For now.
Okay. Trustee Juan.
I'm glad that President Roche mentioned the adult ed. That was one of my topics. But, you know, first of all, I want to say I am supportive of this, this proposal. I do wish that there had been better, a more full report out so that we had more information. But I do want to point out that Vice President Miller, after I asked some additional questions, I realized that he had put in an, an additional report that isn't actually within the bind, it wasn't in the binder, it was off to the side, and if you read through it, they are going to do some additional demographic analysis so that we have a better understanding of what the needs are in the community. But because my area, Area Five, also bleeds a little bit into Area Seven, one, one of the things I did was, I interviewed all the superintendents, and one of the, the feedback I got from that community, that part of that community, was that PCC main campus is inaccessible to people in that area. And that is why many of the students will go to other community colleges like Mount SAC, Rio Hondo, because they don't feel, they're, they're, even if they're equidistant, they, they just don't feel that if they can't get classes at PCC, there's no real reason for them to make a great effort to do that. So indeed, we are losing students, and we are not serving a significant population of our district. And the other thing is, as President Roche has said, you know, I think that when SB one seventy-three, which touches on the adult ed, kind of stalled in the senate, and we knew it would, we knew it was going to give us the opportunity to pull together enough information for collaboratives. And as I've said, I am chairing the LA County Collaborative of the K-12s and the community colleges to work on the adult ed issue. And so we have about two months to start to pull together planning and the blueprint of how we're going forward on adult ed. This was an adult ed facility, and it puts us in a great position to move forward very quickly and to form these collaboratives. So I'm based on community need and community input and our opportunity to serve what will befall us on the adult ed arena. I think that, you know, this is a good thing for us to do.
I think trustee Brown is next.
Yeah, thank you. Well, basically, Linda said it all. I am definitely in support of this, because it improves access to our students, the population that really, it's a hardship for them to come to campus to take classes. One of the crying out in the community is that people can't get classes, well, over, if we have a center over there, just like on our presentation that night, it was an overwhelming need from all the community members that really wanted this to be here. I think we really should consider this to enable more students to receive what they need, which is an education. Access is very important, and a lot of folks cannot come all the way to campus. So I'm definitely in support of this, and I hope we can really take advantage of it, because there are monies right now that we could recapture by growing our institution.
Trustee Fellow, and then we'll start around again.
Today, I spent the whole afternoon talking about FTEs. I didn't think I would come tonight and have to go through this again. But the game keeps changing every year, and the game this year is to up all FTS at the universities, as it is at the community colleges. And the ramifications of not meeting FTEs, but the public probably doesn't understand all these things, is less classes and it's less faculty. Faculty search has come to a, to an end. I'm very much in favor of the, of what we're talking about tonight, and I agree with my colleagues, Linda and Berlinda. There's many benefits to this. One is less traffic. Another is we're going to serve an area of our district that we sometimes don't think about too much. As a matter of fact, we need to, to have stronger relationships, particularly with the city of El Monte. And as you know, the city is giving, is it fifty thousand dollars in scholarships, and none of them come to PCC students, because they don't even know that we're part of that district. And, and I know Chairman, President Martin and myself are, have been talking to some of the city council people and people in the city to rectify this. But I think it's very important to have a presence down there, and I don't know what we're going to do. We can't build here anymore, and so we have to look for these different avenues. And I hope we can have a long discussion or retreat dealing with the satellite campuses and what have you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. No, I know, but he has insight on some of the questions.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I see a couple of issues here. The first one is, the mention has been made that there's thousands of students, individuals avail, that are in the area that if we had a campus, a satellite location there, that they would be attending. Has there been a study conducted to let us know exactly how many, or are we just saying there's a large population, i.e., they will come? I don't know about that. And I don't want to bring back the past. A, a vote has been taken, I respect that vote. But if there was a winter calendar, a winter intercession, we would have four opportunities to increase our FTEs without having to spend additional funds to go elsewhere. We have the facilities here, we have four sessions to attract our students, and i.e. increase our, our FTEs. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to kind of focus on board last time around, unless, you know, some words thing, so.
I just want to do a procedural thing, and, and, and since I think we should.
I just want to do a procedural thing in, 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 since I think we should pull this for a separate vote.
We are going to do that.
And, and so I can make a mo, I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, this consent item.
Okay.
The consent item is for authorizing the district to enter in this contract.
Okay.
We're not really, we don't really have agendized this proposal. We only have, what I can see on the agenda is authorizing the district to end, to enter into a contract.
Yes.
For the facility. And so I wanted to.
Okay, well, let's make the motion in a second, and then we can finish the discussion and have that separate vote and then get back.
Right.
To the rest of the consent item.
So I'm making that motion to authorize the district to enter that contract.
We have a second. It was Trustee Baum moved approval of consent item B 98417-4, second by Trustee Wa. I'm going to go to.
And, and then I'm just going to make one comment, just as an aside.
Okay, I'm going to go to Dr. Mann.
Before we, uh, uh, beat ourselves up about not providing services to our students within the district, because I am all for this and then support this, we, seventy percent of our enrollment comes from outside the district already. So there's, there's clearly people are finding their way through, through long distances to PCC. So we, we shouldn't just, uh, assume that building this is going to, uh, increase access for in-district students, but I, because we have a ton, we have a ton of students coming from outside the district as it stands to make it to the main campus already. But I still support this because I want to, I think more locations provides more access no matter where we are.
Okay. Dr. Mann.
Uh, I'm going, this will be very brief. I'm going to just support this. What I wanted was the discussion. I think we've had it, we've had a good discussion. But one of the things that Dr. Rocha said in this explanation, I'm sure he may not have meant this the way it sounded, but I, it, it, it's something that really upsets me. Our faculty is only available to teach between 9:00 and 4:00 on Monday through Thursday. My understanding is our faculty are available to teach whatever time they're assigned. Now, if our students won't take the classes, that's different. But you know, I can remember as a student, I went to all these 7:40 classes, these 7:00 classes, plus my son, who was a computer science major at Berkeley, took a class in computer science at 10:00 on Saturday night. So I think we really need to, and I know, I know we've had this for a very long time. People are very comfortable, they don't want to come to class on Friday, they don't want to teach this time, they want to have the afternoons off. But I think we really, really need to really focus on enrollment management and schedule, first of all, when the students want to come, and secondly, when we have the rooms. I think if we schedule classes early in the morning, some of the students will come if that's the only way they can get the class. So I'm sure you didn't mean that they were not, really mean that they were not available, like they have other jobs that they have, they have to leave at 4:00 because they all have to go sell real estate or something? So my, my position is I want to encourage the administration to try to get the maximum use of our facilities. And part of it is simply scheduling classes all through the hour, and there is such a thing as taking classes on Friday. There used to be an MWF, that meant Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I think we ought to go back to MWF, and then we'd have TH, and that would be Tuesday, Thursday. Then you have a weekend college. I'm a, I'm a taskmaster here.
If it helps, Dr. Mann, I'm taking an MWF class this next semester.
Well, I'd like to know that.
So we, we have them, you know, I, I don't not support the proposal, and I hate double negatives, um, because I'm not completely sure where I am with this one. And in principle, this is a proposal that I support, in, in absolute principle. However, I think there are a lot of strategic directional items that I don't think we've really addressed, and it feels premature to be entering into it now when if we only have a couple of weeks till our next board meeting, you know, and we're looking at offering these classes mid-October, I don't think there would be harm in waiting until the September 4th meeting. You know, we're, we're moving now into, uh, the Center for the Arts, so classrooms are going to free up from that process, I would imagine. We, I, I, and I'm really concerned, you know, not about offering classes, but offering support services. There's a lot that goes into, um, a satellite campus. It's not just about offering instructional space, it's about making sure we have enough counselors and advisors there. It's about making sure we have someone from financial aid and admissions over there. It's about making sure that all of these other elements that makes up being a community college student are available. I haven't heard anything about that. Um, all I've heard is get them in the seats because we need the money, and I think that when we get them into those seats, we need to be making sure that we're offering the best experience. And so I haven't heard those strategic elements, and I, I think if we'd seen, you know, if I'd known this was going to be the real discussion, I think we may have been more prepared for the questions on it.
Trustee.
What is the difference, um, you know, if we were to hold off on this until September 4th? What is the harm to the district?
Okay, let's get an answer to that. Looked like you wanted an answer to that.
I'll answer the budget question, and I think Dr. Bell wants to answer some other issues real quick. The budget, the, 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 the question is, if we don't, uh, we need to know tonight, if at all possible, whether this is a go or no-go, so I can make the adjustments in the budget if in fact that's required. And, and if we don't approve this tonight, then I'm not sure what budget I bring to you folks on the 4th.
And is it not possible to bring two?
Yeah, sure.
One with a Rosemead and one without a Rosemead?
Trustee Fraser, it's, no, because we have to publish the budget, uh, to the, to the community, uh, for three to five days. It, it's just not, it's just, that's not, that's just not practical.
Uh, and Trustee Fraser, if I may, to get to your, um, your concern, which I think is a valid one about support services. Uh, what we do on the primary campus here on the Colorado campus is that we provide our services with specialists, our financial aid staff, our specialists, financial aid, admissions and records, counseling and so forth. The model for the Rosemead is to staff this with student affairs generalists. In other words, individuals who will have the skill set to understand how, how enrollment process and admission and records impacts a student in financial aid and so forth. By staffing it with generalists, you need fewer staff. And, but we do plan to have the student support services present there. And this particular building gives us the opportunity to do that, which we do not have. For example, if we mount a class at a high school, we don't have the capability of doing that. We will have the capacity to do those kinds of things in Rosemead.
And that, that is spoken to in the document as well.
Okay, Dean Oliva.
If I, if I could, Simon, we would be able to pilot the one-stop idea at Rosemead by having, uh, staff members that are trained in admissions, financial aid, counseling and advising, so that it's a one-stop concept. And then ultimately, it would also be ideal to know tonight whether or not we could let all of the students know who are in our buildings, who are taking the assessment test today. I mean, we have students who are still signing up and looking for classes, so it would be great, rather than turning them away, or if they get discouraged after they crash classes and cannot find seats, um, next week, it would be very encouraging for us to say, we have this full complement of eight-week late-start classes that you could sign up for. So it would be great to know tonight if we could start promoting that with students.
Okay, Trustee Thompson.
An observation, we've been about 45 minutes on a consent item that has simply, uh, almost a million dollars of money to be spent. And yes, we have a, a memo from, uh, Mr. Miller and, uh, Dr. Bell in our, um, packets also, but, uh, that's really not a part of the agenda item. So that's really, uh, not helpful to the public, I don't think, is to understand what we're talking about. I understand the logic of wanting to have, um, a facility and, and meetings and classes in various parts of our, uh, district, and, and that's one thing. If we had this on the agenda for that type of a discussion, uh, that would be a different matter from my perspective. I, I, I can't help but observe too that, you know, locally, um, we have, what, I think roughly 5% of our enrollment population, last time I was given numbers, is African-American students. Yeah, how many of those we have locally? We go out with the churches, we go out to the schools, and we have an outreach, and we're being effective with that. But there's plenty of work to be done locally without venturing out to Rosemead or anyplace else. And as Mr. Baum reminded us, roughly 70% of our population, our enrollment population already comes from outside the district. So, uh, I agree, we want to do a better job reaching out internally of the district, uh, but I'm not persuaded that, uh, this is the, um, approach to take, and it's certainly not the way to get there, um, the way that we've, um, been required to do it this evening.
I'm going to call for the question.
Okay, we have to call for the que, I don't think you even have to call the question because I don't see any more lights, so we're going to vote. If that's okay. So I'm not going to vote on the call for the question, we're going to vote on the motion. So, um, we're going to look to the advisory vote? Yes. This is that, this is why we do it this way. It's a blinking light. Okay, there it is. Okay, remainder of the board? Okay, so it appears the advisory vote is negative, right? Turned from a neutral to negative during the rest of the board? So we'll recognize that as a negative, I think? No, it's officially a neutral. It's locked, it's locked. Chair recognizes it as a neutral, but the motion carries on a six to one by the remainder of the board. So, um, we are moving on?
Are we?
Thank you. Um, and is there any other, uh, and you noticed I didn't make one comment through all that other than to answer a question? And the only observation I'll make is that many times when we're going out in other areas and other sites, we always run afoul of local neighbors who always say, "Not in my backyard." But we noticed when we went to Rosemead, it was the exact opposite.
They wanted us.
The whole community came out, local elementary board members, high school board members, council members in good attendance. Community members came out and said, "Please, please do this for us." So that gave, that warmed my heart. So anyway, that would be my one observation. I didn't speak in all those rounds. Are there any other 21B topics that somebody wants besides that contract?
I'd just like to move, um, approval of 21B.
Well, we're, I was going to try to get through all the rest of the questions, but okay, we got a move, um, we got a motion for 21B. Is there a second for 21B? No one wants a second? Guys, for lack of a second, but we'll get there because, okay, we're moving on to 27B.
26B.
Oh, was there a 26B?
26.
I think somebody requested 27B as in boy.
Delete that one. Delete that one. I have the answer, yeah.
Okay, so we got an answer. We are on 28B as in boy. Right? Who requested 28?
I did.
Okay, go ahead, Trustee Brown.
Delete it, I have the answer.
Oh, goddamn.
I, I have.
Okay, Trustee Wa, 28B.
So 28B, I had a discussion with Vice President Miller, and so I, I just wanted to, um, publicly kind of state my concerns. On 28B, um, there were two bidders who we reached out to, but they could not meet the bid security requirement. So Vice President Miller did answer those questions. Question I think he's still looking up, and I think that, um, we should be careful of is we did accept a sole source bidder. And so my question was, was it that, did we waive that bid security requirement, or do they also have to meet the requirement? And why did that bidder not bid with the other two bidders if they were viable candidates? So I think Vice President Miller is looking at information up. But I, I just want us to be a little cautious in discerning on these kinds of bids.
So, so I'm hearing that we don't have an answer tonight, but you will forward us an answer, but in your mind, it doesn't warrant pulling this?
Not from, not, not from a vote, but I think that we should have that information to make sure that the bid was on the up and up, and that we're not waiving any requirements that did not give full opportunity to all bidders.
Okay, so we're, we will get that from you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I see 30B as in boy is our next one?
That's me.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like that pool. I would like for us to discuss that resolution, 510, I think it is, as to why we want to change.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, uh, I'm going to ask council to provide the legal basis by which this is occurring, and then, and then I'll get, I'll go further into it.
Um, certainly. This act was adopted in 2011 and made available to governmental entities to raise the threshold for bidding requirements for public works contracts only. The bid under the Public Contract Code is $15,000. This act permits direct contracting up to $45,000 without bid process. For $45,000 to $175,000, it permits an informal bid process, which means that the district would have a list of pre-qualified contractors in each area of service obtained through a very specific process, which is advertised through trade journals. And the trade journals are actually specified in the act where they have to be advertised. That permits the district to have contracts let on a more expeditious basis without going through the bid process, which can take anywhere from six weeks to three or four months. The final threshold is $175,000 and up, which requires the same formal bid process that you've seen before, where the board authorizes going out to bid and awarding the contract to the lowest responsive bidder. This isn't, um, this does not preclude using the bid process for $15,000 and up public works contracts, but allows the district a great deal of flexibility in awarding contracts in a much more expeditious manner. And the last point is, it does not affect, uh, material supplies and equipment contracts. The current threshold for bidding on those is $83,400. That is still required. This act does not affect that in any way.
So the only thing I will, thank you, Gail. The only thing I will add to that is, uh, staff is requesting this in order to, uh, allow us to more efficiently and more effectively and in a more rapid way respond to the needs of the district. In talking to some of my fellow colleagues at other institutions, more and more community college districts, uh, for example, Sridos and others have, are going to this. Temple City, you might have seen an article in the paper two or three weeks back where they adopted this. Most public agencies are doing this in order to, uh, be more efficient and effective. And I think, um, uh, in, in my conversations with Trustee Brown and Trustee Wa today, uh, I, I think, uh, the reason for this conversation among others is to be very clear and very transparent publicly with what it is that we are doing, what it, what it is that we are requesting.
Okay, um, Trustee Brown, are you comfortable with all that?
I am, yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm looking to the rest of the board and Trustee Wa.
I am, I, I did not have a problem at all with the process, and I think it's the right thing to do. Um, so I just, and maybe I just should have said this upfront when we pulled it, but, um, one of the things I thought that we had agreed on was whenever we have a major change in policy, such as a bidding process or how we bid out positions, that it would not be buried in consent items, what would be on the agenda for full discussion. So I don't want to beat anyone up about it, but that was really just my issue on that. I don't have a problem with this, um, this request and this, uh, this policy.
Point taken, Trustee Wa, thank you.
Okay, um, I think we're moving on then into the P reports. I see 24P was the next request, and I'm sorry, I didn't make notes tonight who requested 24.
It was, uh, Trustee, Trustee Brown. And I think we have the answer.
Same.
First, um, and we can, uh, I thank Trustee Brown for the, um, for the question, and by way of answering first, I was remiss, um, we have our, uh, good colleague, Carlos Tito Altimirano, who is, uh, now representing, uh, Classified Senate, uh, board meeting. So can we give it up for Tito, please? And, um, along with Trustee Brown, uh, Carlos, on behalf of the Classified Senate, uh, questioned this item. And I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Miller, but I'll say, "This is an item that you see every year on consent. It is a ritual compliance item, and, uh, in no way, shape or form does it authorize any change in salaries." So did I get that right?
You did, uh, President Rocha. In effect, what this does is it, it empowers the board to, uh, make adjustments should it, uh, deem necessary due to, uh, exigencies of, of some nature, financial and otherwise. But more importantly, it provides the opportunity for the board to make decisions as it did very recently with the retroactive increase for staff. What the action that you took last year, uh, at this time, allowed you to take the action to do a retroactive increase for staff, because that was an adjustment too. And this, this declaration of indefinite salaries just provides the district and the board options to do the things it needs to do, either in a financial emergency or in a, in a better scenario as we've just experienced.
Okay, so before I go to board, did that, are you satisfied? Did you get the answers you need or any other questions that we can help you with?
Yes, we're definitely satisfied with that again. It was a big concern at our meeting today, but I'm, we're definitely classified, I mean, satisfied, and I'll be bringing that up with the Senate at our next meeting.
So thank you for, for being in tune to that. Okay, Trustee Fraser.
So are there, any, I know that we have the planned increases, and that's wonderful. Do we have any, I, I'd just like to ask if there are any sort of large, you know, volume of decreases that that come to the board so that we are notified that there is a, a relative decrease, if there are any planned decreases?
Well, certainly in my tenure, uh, in the district, we have not, uh, done that to our staff, and that I'm aware of. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure what your question is, but if, if your question is, "Are we planning something?", the answer is no.
Not, not if, not that you're planning something.
If I'm aware of anything possibly happening, the answer's no. But what this document does, it provides the board of trustees the legal authority to take the steps necessary to be the, you know, effective fiduciaries of the district.
Okay, and so any further changes or variations, other than the ones already approved, would come back to the board?
Absolutely.
Great, that's all I needed to know.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think we're then to 26 and 27P. And I think that was Trustee Frazier. I actually remember that one.
Yeah.
Right? And you had one too, Trustee Wa on that? Okay.
I'm just asking for a separate vote. Since I don't attend closed session, I'd like to record my vote separately.
Okay. Trustee Wa.
Yeah, I just had more of a comment. So this is back to, whenever we make a major organizational change, so this is a pretty high-level position, although Mr. Gutierrez holds one of those positions, which is now being reassigned or split off. It would be helpful to have a little more discussion on it, so we know the purpose of the organization, and we can, and the board understands the goals for each of these positions. And then, you know, I try not to get into the weeds on this stuff, but just looking over the position description, I was just curious as to why it was desirable to have a PhD on either of these positions. It doesn't seem like a PhD would be necessary for government relations, nor PR director. So those are really my comments on it.
Okay, so it sounds like we just need a quick summary on, you were talking, it sounded like the governmental relation issue, right?
Yes, and appreciate the question. Basically, as, you know, we've often discussed, board of trustees and elsewhere, that the duties of the public relations area in general have expanded exponentially over the years. And Wa's done a great job, and we've asked him to step up and take this greater responsibility in government relations, because one of the changes, and one of the big changes additions to the, to that particular office, was the need to do active vigorous government relations work, you know, the work with the legislative representatives, all the legislations that you're seeing. And then even more recently, when the board approved the contracts for Cassidy and Associates in Washington, D.C., and McCallum in Sacramento, so that the college could be more vigorous in lobbying government for additional grants and revenue, it became clear that government relations was centrally important, not a part-time job. So we're going to ask Wa to move over and take that responsibility full-time, and that's --
Trustee Wa, it's all yours still. You're on, this is your --
So I just wanted to add, so there was one other thing I had asked for, and I spoke to Vice President Miller, is when we have these changes in our, especially management positions, I'm always curious to know what the pre-CERP numbers are, the post-CERP numbers, and I've already discussed it with Vice President Miller, so I'm satisfied with his answer. But I also think that when we add these high-level positions, at some point, it should be brought back to the board what the goals are to be achieved by that particular position. So I understood the position description, but it would be good to know what we expect to be achieved and milestones to be accomplished and measured.
At 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, when I sit down with Mr. Gutierrez, we will be talking about a work plan for the new office. And so I expect we'll have something back to the board shortly.
Thank you.
In fact, Wa's already begun working on it.
Okay, Trustee Baum.
I just want to say, and this is one area, obviously, the board is focused on policy, but the board also has a Legislative Affairs Committee. And this is one area that I hope that the, this new endeavor, we've made significant investments, we've hired two outside consultants, now we're establishing a full-time position in this area, that the Board Legislative Affairs Committee is actually deeply involved with setting strategy and monitoring progress in this area to kind of be able to report to the rest of the board what's going on and how the resources are being deployed, and what is the return on the investment being made. Because I just think it's, we're now making a much more significant and dramatic investment than we had two years ago. And I want to be assured that this is an area that the board is actively invited to participate in, especially as being elected officials. I think the board has a keener understanding sometimes about what works in interacting with elected, other elected officials than even sometimes staff or consultants do as well.
Trustee Frazier.
You know, as someone who doesn't attend closed session, I have a very, you know, public-minded view of this. And, you know, reading the agenda and the consent description that's available to the public, it wasn't really clear what, depending on which page you read, what the director would be doing, or even that it was a new position. And so maybe just some sort of way to more accurately describe what's being done to the public may be a good idea. Obviously, leaving what else?
But Trustee Wa just said, right? And I think that's what he just said, that they're working on more definitively at 8:00 AM tomorrow. And just for the record, we didn't talk about this in closed session or anything.
Not specific.
This isn't a closed-session topic.
You know, let me be clear, it's --
The appointment, the name, who we might appoint to it would be a closed session, but not the position or the, we do that here. But anyway, go ahead.
That's not really what I meant, you know. When you talk about what the position's going to do, that's fine. I just, you know, even if, whatever it is, it wasn't very clear from the agenda, was my point, what precisely was happening. That is what I would say.
So you're echoing, I think, what Trustee Wa --
Kind of, a little bit.
Okay. Okay, I think we're through. I'm gonna entertain a motion, because it was requested for a separate vote, to approve 26 and 27P.
So moved.
So moved. In my 24 years of politics, I've never spent this much time on a consent record.
Setting new records all the time. I'm gonna take yours as a second, Tony, because Linda was the first. Any further discussion? Advisory vote abstains, and that's a hard, fast, and abstain. And the rest of the board, we have one abstention and six affirmatives. So that passes six to one, Mr. Thompson, in abstention. Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve all the remainders of the consent items that have not been previously approved.
So moved, second.
I think it was motion by Trustee Wa, second by Trustee Frazier. Any further discussion? Advisory vote? Okay. Okay, now, we've been waiting for this moment, not because we didn't think it couldn't happen.
First thing, thank you.
We have some special introductions, don't we?
Martin, so much for consent. So one way or another, consent, regular agenda, it's a long meeting. So we took some significant actions. The first thing I want to do is, I want to thank my friend and colleague, our friend and colleague, Juan Gutierrez, for stepping up to take this important role, and we wish him all success. So if we can congratulate Rana. And second of all, we do have, I don't think that any of the faculty that we appointed, full-time faculty that we appointed are here, but they are all appointed and ready to go for next Monday scanning. But there are two other individuals in 26P and 27P, I'm sorry, 26P. The first, we already know them, know him. If we can invite the sergeant to the podium very quickly, and if, is the chief still here? Okay. Could you introduce the sergeant, please, and we can give him a round of applause? And this, we just wanted to introduce the sergeant to the board and to the public. This is not his swearing-in. We'll have his swearing-in at a future meeting, so.
I'd like to introduce William Abernathy, 33 years of law enforcement experience, and we're very fortunate to have him.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I only have about 10 minutes of things I want to talk to you about, and I know you are away here. Really, I just want to thank the board of trustees and Dr. Rocha for this opportunity. And I plan on being here for several years, and I hope to do you a good job. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I ask Dean Davila to please come to the podium and introduce the new director of the Small Business Development Center.
Thank you, President Rocha. I have the distinct pleasure to begin our new branch of economic and workforce development here at PCC. And the very first mark is the SBDC Center, for which Salvatrius Kumho has been elegantly selected for this position, and has high praises by many business advisors of our local Sangarville Valley. So without further ado, Salvatrius Kumho.
Thank you. Thank you for the warm welcome. I'm absolutely thrilled and honored to be chosen as the lead for the SBDC for the Sangarville Valley area. And I'm most excited about being a part of the PCC family and community. Look forward to meeting each and every one of you on an individual basis, and getting to know you a little bit better, and working with you. And look forward to some great work. Thank you.
Thank you, President Martin.
Okay, so we are on to Item F, which is a revision of a smoking policy. And Dr. Rocha.
Okay. You have Item F in your book. The public has it. I would, this is a really significant moment for the college. I would invite Joe Busco, I think, or I hope is still here, to the podium. And Kent, make it? Ah, if Joe and Kent could come to the podium, because these two colleagues were the prime movers that have brought this to you. They don't have a speech ready, but they, first of all, they stand there to accept my thanks, and the thanks of the college for the hard work they've done to develop this policy, to move it through the consultation process, and to bring it to us tonight. I've asked them to appear for the board discussion, any questions? Because these are the two colleagues who are best able to answer any questions the board has. And of course, the item, that is, the approval of the revision, comes with my strongest recommendation, President Martin.
Okay. So we'll open it for board discussion. Obviously, this has, this is one item we have discussed, so I'm gonna start with Trustee Baum, and then Trustee Feller.
Two things. One is, my question is gonna be, did this go through a shared governance process, and does it have the support of our very shared governance units? And number two, I'll move approval of the proposed policy.
So I see shaking of heads over on the appropriate table.
Yes, during the, our summer break, it was presented to Academic Senate in our first July meeting, and the Academic Senate, after much discussion, did unanimously approve it.
And --
Second question?
I'm sorry.
No, I, go ahead.
The answer, Trustee Baum, is yes. And Joe and Kent moved this through, not just the Academic Senate, for which we're grateful, the Classified Senate moved it through associated students. Who am I forgetting, Joe?
The issue. We spoke the issue with leadership.
Yes. And then finally, the college council.
And management as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, management. So we made sure.
I saw all the heads move, so it was good. Trustee Feller.
I just want to say, Cal State Fullerton became the first university in California to end smoking, and it's working fabulously well. And I'm so happy that we're doing the same thing here.
Trustee Frazier.
One of the things I'm glad to see is that, you know, Trustee Brown mentioned education, and I'm glad to see that the enforcement of this policy has, for first-time violators, the opportunity to swap a fine for enrolling in smoking cessation. And so I think that that really reflects that educational goal, so.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval.
So moved, so moved.
I already moved.
Trustee, I don't think we have a motion on the table, do we?
I moved it when I made my --
Did you move it?
Back in.
We have a motion on the table from Baum, Trustee Baum, and Trustee, okay. So my apologies. We're ready to call the question. Advisory vote, is affirmative? May or the board, is all affirmative? Trustee Wa, you're with us? Yeah, you're just quick, right? Okay. Just making sure. So, okay, so that carried unanimously of all members, including the advisory vote.
I want to make one quick point, President Martin.
Okay.
That a constituent of my district who happens to be a student, Juan Ashton, actually asked to meet with me about this in January, and asked, and I pledged to him that we would continue to push that process forward. And I want the students to know that this, as from where I sit, is a place where the students also had a very constructive role in actually affecting policy at the district level. And for those who may still be in touch with Juan, to let him know that his request and the evidence that he presented has now come to fruition to a outcome which he had advocated for.
And so, thank you, board of trustees, on behalf of the college, for your approval. And we have a final visual presentation from Professor Busco and Dean Yamucci. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you two for your hard work on this, and --
We also brought some pins that we'll pass out, which is the cigarette that's tied in a knot. And so it gives some visuals to us going on to a smoke-free campus. Thank you very much.
This has been a long desire of mine, for a really long time, and, you know, trying to work it all, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's really important. We have Item G, Dr. Rocha, our annual report on student fee and budget allocation.
Yes, you have this under Item G in your board book, and I would call Dean Thayer to the podium to please present the report. I should say that, make clear, this is an action item. The action item is to officially receive and approve the report, okay? There isn't any specific item that every year we receive the report. And what I would ask the board to do is to decide whether it will receive and approve the report, as Dean Thayer is about to issue.
And I'll just, I don't mean to preempt you or anything, but there was a voluminous amount of information in the packet, and so if you're thinking long or short, I think you can go short. Because there was a lot here, and then we'll open it up to the board and see where it goes. But go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin, Dr. Rocha, members of the board. Yeah, I was gonna be brief, so I'll take that cue. Basically, the Student Service Fund was established in 1972, revised in 2010, which added the student activity fee, which you have in your packet. This year, this past year, the fund supported over 125 programs, and one of the highlight programs was obviously the Metro ITAP program. In the one-page summary, you'll see the number of programs, the breakout, and the amounts that were allocated. And with that, I will be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to board questions. First, any comments or questions from our shared governance groups? Okay, Trustee Mann, then Trustee Frazier, and then Trustee Baum.
Yes, I do have a, first of all, I would say I'm very pleased to see that you've included the numbers on the bookstore and the food commission. And if you've done that before, I don't remember seeing it, but I'm glad to see it. I'm glad to see it. Now, this is my question, like I raise, I think, every year, so I'll just disappoint everyone and do it again. I noticed that the revenue from the bookstore income is $126,266.97. I wonder if, I think I would much prefer to see much less revenue and reduction, if possible, in prices of books. I have always wondered why our college bookstore has to make a profit on the books. So if this is from selling T-shirts and mugs, I'm very happy about it. But one of the things we hear over and over and over again is the high cost of books, how books cost more than fees, how, you know, what a difficulty it is, how students can't buy books, how they, you know, they borrow books, they go to the library. So I would like to see that number there as zero, and some way reduce the price of books. Now, I have been told that we would be an unfair competition, but that's my position. And so, do you know where that money came from, that revenue, that extra $126,000?
Well, it's my understanding that the textbook, the bookstore doesn't make a whole lot of money on textbooks, so it is the other items where they do make their revenue. The markup is really not that much. The textbook cost across the board is expensive, and I know that's an ongoing conversation with the bookstore, just trying to make sure that they can provide what the students need at a reasonable cost. So my understanding is, it's not a huge markup on those textbooks, and it does come from the soft goods and the retail items.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Trustee Frazier and then Trustee Baum.
I just wanted to get a motion on the table before we continue discussion, which was to receive the report.
Hey, there's a motion on the table? There's a second. Thank you. Trustee Baum. Trustee Baum?
First off, I was one of the trustees that supported the establishment of the activities fee and actually made the motion. And it began under the first time I served as president. And we had active discussion about it. And so I was pledged that there would be a regular reporting as to the disbursement of the fee and accounting for the fee. I'm missing from this a sense of where the, usually there's a list of the clubs also that receive...
Trustee Baum, just angle your mic a little bit more towards you there.
Usually, there's a list of the clubs that receive funding, and I see some of it. But then, so, okay, we'll go through my specific questions. My understanding is the fee generated $535,000 of income this past year. And expenditures were only $435,000. So we're charging more than we're even able to spend for the, for that. And so then I wonder, are we charging too much to students? And should we rethink the amount of the student activities fee? Then I see something like $73,000 for ASPCC operations. One of the things was, are we now, are we using, what is, are we using this to fund staff positions, which I thought we weren't going to do using this? And so what is $73,000 in operations for ASPCC? And then there's some other things that jumped out. I didn't know what the Pasadena Youth Center, $17,000 was for and others. So I wanted to first give AS an opportunity to say, what are you spending $73,000 for unless you're hiring staff using that?
But ask Dean Thayer and again, Mr. Orozco is the president of the Associated Students.
So there is, there was no staffing in that amount. Basically, the traditional revenue for the student budget came from the bookstore, food service.
I understand where that came from before.
No. And what happened last year was we did not budget that amount because it had not been secured at the time, which created deficit in the budget for AS. So that's, that money was offset because we did not want to budget an amount that we did not have secured. So that, with the operational amount for AS, it was so that they could operate and conduct their business for the year.
So what are the, what are the traditional expenditures that AS has? I mean, its materials and supplies, you know, copy machines, computers? What's, how does it get to $73,000?
Well, they have 12 positions. And one of their bigger funded areas is the inter-club council, which supports the club activities. And it also, it has come out of their budget partially. Some of their initiatives that they had sponsored this past year. So sustainability is a relatively new position, and that's going to be pushed.
I see inter-club council gets $130,000 already. So I'm talking about, what's that $73,000 for?
Well, the, basically, it's the 12 positions, they get a specific budget. And so their budget, their baseline for their budgets had been approximately $110,000. And so last year, they were, they were short about $80,000 because they did not, were not receiving the revenue from the other areas that they had traditionally received it from. So that was an offset to backfill that amount.
So how do, there's a committee that oversees this, that includes several administrators. You're on that committee, right?
Yeah, there's a nine-member group.
Right.
And it has the vice presidents, myself, faculty, staff, and students.
And it's about five students and four administrators or something like that? And how often does that group meet?
Four students, five administrators.
And how often does that group meet?
We met four times in the fall of last year.
Is, are the funds accounted for? I mean, or is it part of our normal audit process as well? I don't know.
All the funds are audited with the rest of the district annually.
Okay. Well, my assessment, I just would want the board to consider, and since we approved the policy, which didn't actually specifically say, charge this or that, if there's 100,000 of unexpended funds each year, to me, that means that there's probably not a need for us to tax students to that amount. And we additionally, as Dr. Mann pointed out, collect another 100,000 out of student pockets by charging premiums at the bookstore and things like that. For those, I think the board should actually consider a, whether the policy and the procedure should be revised and either lower the price for students, since we're not using that amount, or even make it an opt-in system as opposed to an opt-out system, where students can voluntarily, as part of their registration, elect to give a, make a contribution to the activities fee. And I don't know what Dr. Rocha said, oh, that we've only had the opportunity to receive the report. But I wanted to see, is there, is that something separately we should consider agendizing a review of the fee? And should it be continued in its current form? Or shall we, should we entertain, given now that we have a couple of years of experience of how it's being used to, because I think we all agree, the less financial burden on the students, the better. And if we have an opportunity to reduce that, maybe we should consider it.
I would ask council, if the board wanted to create an opt-in system or reduce the fee under the title that we have on the agenda, could we do so tonight? Or would we need to re-agendize that?
No, you'd have to re-agendize it, President Martin. The public would not have notice of that motion.
Okay. So that answers that question. But if the board wanted to, we would, we certainly would re-agendize.
During the agenda for consideration, just request it, and then I'll leave it to the president to decide if he wanted to agendize that.
Well, at some point, I'd like to get the will of the body, whether to put that on as a future agenda item, because there's, if we don't have even four people that are interested in talking about it, then we're wasting a lot of time, right? So maybe under future agenda items, I'll pose that question. We'll see if there's a motion to put that on. And if that's the will of the group, we'll do it. And if not, we won't. AS president, go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, just to kind of clarify what that $73,000 goes to. Basically, it goes to certain events throughout the year that promote academic success that are not indirectly in conjunction with the college, which I'm actually going to work on this year in creating a community on campus. So those things include things like Welcome Day, Club Week.
But those are, they're listed separately as separate expenditures in the same thing. There's, Welcome Day, Club Week is already in there. But then there's a $73,000 just for operations.
No, the $73,000 includes operations and exactly what you're talking about. So that includes money that goes to all nine presidents that do get a budget in accordance to spending. So that does include all 12 positions which are actually funded. And I believe the president and student trustee are given a small discrepancy, but that's amount. For example, I was only given about $9,000 last year to expend on events that I wanted to throw. And that does include the $73,000 that was included in this packet. But those events basically promote academic success through anything, including Club Week, Welcome Week, as I said, Night of Madnitz, Constitution Day, Relaxation Week, Holiday Angels, Black History Month. So things that do promote a community on campus that are specifically important to students and their success.
Okay. So thank you for addressing that. Trustee Fraser, I think you were next. And then we're going to go to Trustee Fellow.
You know, I think hopefully in future years, this report will come at the end of the semester, because then, you know, I was ready to give a lot of this information last year. And I think it's unfair to someone who's been in the position a couple of weeks to have a lot of the history.
Boy, I'm just like 0 for 2 tonight, you know? It's like, I can't get the right topics...
Nope, not your fault.
On the agenda, I can't get the right topics. Off the agenda, we're spending forever on consent, and we're just flying through all the agenda topics. Okay. So, yeah, go ahead. Keep going.
So, you know, when there was a significant budget shortfall due to contract situations, I did secure, as a loan originally, this money for AS operations. And a lot of the events that you see around campus, Welcome Week, which is separate from Welcome Day. Welcome Day is a sponsored college activity. Week of Welcome, however, is completely put on by the student government. So there are, you know, at least 10 events a semester, all the way from the Relaxation Week, which provides the yoga and the meditation and the massages during Finals Week, all the way through to a lot of the Heritage Month events. And so these are the things that operations are. I would say that, you know, I'm not sure about the balances, because we do have encumbrances still. Is that not correct? We have some encumbrances, especially related to the metro. If I'm correct, if I'm right in thinking that, so I'm not sure that our balance at 100,000 is accurate right now. I think the cash balance is more like 65 after encumbrances. And, you know, it's worth bearing in mind that this is the first year, a lot of the projects that the Student Activity Fee wanted to fund, the SAFI project, for example, the Student Activity Fee Initiative, which has already funded, the Lanceland Project, smart tutoring, 24-hour tutoring on campus. That project couldn't come back because we had extra encumbrances, or the fund had extra encumbrances, by taking 100% of the Metro ITAP cost, which is a boon to the district. It's, you know, one of the sustainable projects we've won awards for, we've done some good work with the ITAP program. And so we've only had a couple of years of adjustment. I think the balances are...
Not going to happen.
Are less than what we have right now. I'm sorry, is this, it's not going to happen?
No. We're not going to call on the audience, so you can put your hands down. And we need to wrap, we need to get this going, because we've got six other items on the agenda, including the budget.
I would say...
Let's get there, people.
I would say that I think there's a lot of explanation in this. I think it goes to very worthwhile projects, and I think it should, you know, stay as it is.
I mean, it could be short, but we're running out of time. And the train's on the track for this one. Okay. Trustee Fellow.
I know Pasadena City College has a very robust study abroad program. And at many universities and colleges, a lot of these funds go to those programs to defray the cost of students. Did I miss that? Or is it not allowed?
No, we put out a call beginning of the semester for proposals. And it goes out to the campus-wide community. And then we allow them to come present to solicit the group for funding. You know, that hasn't been a real, I guess they haven't come to request the amount to fund some of those projects. But it is an open process for anyone on campus to apply.
I would encourage them to do it. I think it's important. Thank you.
Trustee Wa.
Okay. You know, I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased with this report. It's so much better than the reports we've had before. So it's got a lot more information, and I think it's clearer to us what's been, what's done. But I think some of the questions that have come up from, like Trustee Baum, you know, are fair questions. And perhaps, you know, one of the things is, you know, we give you all an opportunity to come back and to answer and to address some of those. I think we're probably still working out the kinks of the information to be given to the board. And some of this really sounds like it's kind of bookkeeping or some things that just, we just didn't get caught up on. But I think one of the things we also want to do, you know, first of all, I want to congratulate the students and their leadership in handling this program. And that's what we want to do, is foster that leadership and that accountability, and give them the latitude to vote among themselves on how these programs are handled and what is in the best interest of the students. So I'd like to suggest that, you know, we, rather than come back for a vote, that we just give the students an opportunity to come back and to answer some of these questions that came up before the board.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Oh, Dr. Mann, did you have, did you want to address? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have just a couple of questions. And it has to do, and I heard Mr. Fraser, he mentioned the Metro ITAP program, but I don't think I followed it. What, so what happened with the Metro ITAP program that there was no expenditures in it?
Well, actually, we just, we just paid the ITAP bill after the report. The district, the activity fee. So it was...
Oh, so it was paid after?
It was paid after this was done. This was the closing of the year from 12/13.
And I had another question about it. I remember about a year ago, the question came up of students with disabilities who were less than full-time, were they eligible for the ITAP program? And I wondered if anyone checked that out, because are individuals, anyone with disabilities, are they eligible for the ITAP program, whether they're a student or not? Or what's the story on that?
Well, for students, we've been working with the DSPS office to basically determine, if the determination is that's considered full-time load for the student, then we've definitely taken that into consideration in regards to the program. So we haven't denied students based upon that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We got a motion on the table. We've answered all the questions. We will address Trustee Baum's under future agenda items. We have the trustee advisory vote is affirmative. Manor of the Board is all affirmative, and that passes unanimously. So we are checking off item G. Thank you all for a very thorough report and a lot of information. And I think we're on item H. There's a request to speak on item H? Is there more than one? Or is there just...
Just one.
Okay. So go ahead on H.
Eduardo Cairo.
Okay. There you go. Did you have an item in on H? Did we not get her H?
Let's take a look.
Well, we're going to find it.
Yes. So you will follow him?
Thank you for bringing that out. I'm sorry we missed it, but you're next.
Thank you. Good evening. My purpose here is to convince the board to delay your vote on this action item, since it is, from my opinion, very heavy on generalities and extremely light on specifics, resulting in many unanswered questions. So if at any time during my presentation I've convinced you, tell me to stop, and we'll save time. Let me begin by asking some important questions. What is the current process? And how exactly does it differ from what is being proposed? And how will the implementation of the office of ombuds person affect those structures that are currently in place handling these matters? If you could turn to tab H, I'll go item by item. Hopefully, I have sufficient time. Under fiscal implications, it's first page, it states that the anticipated cost is covered in the district's current 2013-14 budget. What it does not state is the cost. There should be included in this draft, an estimate, but there is none. Following down, under the heading of background, same, under the heading of background on the same page, the draft reads, "Conflict at the Pasadena Area Community College District is inevitable and can be expensive." My question is, how does a college define expense? 50,000, 100,000, 200,000? And the draft should provide this estimated cost. It would make sense to have some type of cost analysis here to be able to substantiate this claim. Further down, the draft reads that the district suffers substantial loss when aggrieved parties leave the college because of the perception that their concerns are not adequately addressed. Again, the draft does not offer any specific numbers as to how many aggrieved parties have left because of this perception. Is it two? Is it four? Is it 10? Is it 50? It would be good to have these numbers in order to have an estimated cost. Next, the draft reads that an ombuds person is authorized to confidentially receive complaints, concerns, or offers. What it does not do is state that the ombuds person's options or resolutions will be adhered to by the district. In other words, these options, resolutions are not binding. And I believe that it's doubtful that many people will seek the ombuds person, knowing that his or her solutions were the, were only a recommendation and not binding. Which leads me to page one, number three, under the role of the draft, under the title of the role. The draft reads, "The ombuds person has no authority to sanction individuals or make official decisions or pronouncements of right or wrong." Again, it appears then that as far as the aggrieved person is concerned, that the only issue that will be accomplished is that she or he would have vented their frustrations to this individual. And is this worth the cost of this position? Going back to the previous page, there already is in place a negotiated contract for faculty to file grievances, since in this document it repeatedly mentions employees and faculty are employees. Is this another option for faculty? Or is it a way to bypass a negotiated contract? Continue on page four, in the middle of the second paragraph, the draft reads, "The ombuds person will not conduct an investigation. The fact that the ombuds person will not conduct investigation, but rather give the collected information to an appropriate administrator, would not assuage the fears of the aggrieved party. There is in the possibility that the investigation could end up in the hands of an administrator the ombuds person is not aware has an indirect role in the grievance, thus tainting the whole process." You can now turn to page three, under section 4.2, under the heading of informal, the draft reads, "All members of the district have a right to voluntarily consult with the ombuds person. Visitors can feel safe anonymously discussing most matters." It does go on to state that there is an exemption, an exception, excuse me, and that is when it requires disclosure, but this is very vague. In order to protect employees and students, this section needs to be completely explained. If an employee is un... reads, "All members of the district have a right to voluntarily consult with the ombuds person. Visitors can feel safe anonymously discussing most matters." It does, goes on to state that there is an exemption, an exception, excuse me, and that is when it requires disclosure, but this is very vague. In order to protect employees and students, this section needs to be completely explained. If an employee is unsure of what can and cannot be discussed, then it won't work. Under section 4.5, page three, the draft states, "The ombuds person shall report to the president and the board of trustees. If the office of the ombuds person is a safe haven for constituents to discuss their concerns, et cetera, how safe is it if the same person could possibly be reporting directly to the president? Over the past year, I have heard repeatedly from many faculty complaining about the president, both during our academic senate meetings as well and outside of them. You yourselves has also heard them in this very room. Perhaps then it should read, report directly to the board." Page five, section four, "What skills does the ombuds person need? Since the ombuds person will be hearing issues which include home and family concerns and quite possibly have a degree in psychology, how will this affect our present psych services that the college offers?" There is no mention of this in the draft. Page four, section 6.1, under establishing the office of the ombuds person, the draft states that the ombuds person has no institutional authority to change rules, overturn decisions, or force issues to be addressed. However, the ombuds person should be perceived as an influential campus resource. This point is extremely troubling. The wording here is that the district is only concerned with appearances and not reality. One must question the true purpose of the position if perception is the goal. Bring it up. Let me, let me draw, page four, section 6.6, there's no mention of how many support staff there will be, which seems odd since there has been much attention to many others. Under 7.2, 7.21, 7.3, there's mention of print media, support staff, marketing, and ombudsman person office. The ombudsman's records will be kept, under this section, what it's saying here is that there's going to be many costs involved. For example, other costs, other campus publications, such as catalogs, orientation, bulletins, campus newspapers, plus there's a cost to create and maintain a webpage and perhaps necessitate the need to hire more personnel to handle these additional publications, as well as assistance to web personnel. I'll stop there. Thank you for your time. I hope I've, there are more issues that need to be explained. I hope you've taken the time to thoroughly investigate this before you vote. Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't know. We have a lawyer. I don't know. I guess. I have administration. Sure.
Okay, well, my, my comment also about the ombuds person position is very similar, perhaps not as in-depth as Professor Cairo's, but first, thank you for considering the need for an ombuds person. I just have a few questions that I hope will be answered in your discussion tonight, and I sincerely hope there will be another opportunity to continue the discussion in a wider setting before it's voted on. Several colleagues and I have been asking ourselves, why does PCC need such a position, and why now? Have there been more complaints than usual? If so, how many in the last year to warrant this salaried position, and what did they pertain to? This information was not on the packet. The only reasons stated on the packet were because conflict can be costly, I'm assuming lawyers, and to humanize the district. It's unfortunate that we are at a place where both these goals are necessary. So, the problem hasn't been made exactly crystal clear yet, however, there's a proposed solution already, having an ombuds person at PCC. The words impartial, neutral, fair come up in the materials, but I worry that it's not possible if the office of the ombuds person is an administrative arm that reports directly to the president and will be evaluated by him, along with the board and the shared governance committee. This ombuds person is to, quote, "establish rapport with administration while she or he is making the rounds on campus to meet with key people," though I don't know who that is, and certainly it can't be all 1,000 faculty, staff, and all students. Also on the list of duties is part of his or her day-to-day operations. This person will be consulting with administrators. There are much fewer administrators that this person can collegially get to know than a myriad of anonymous staff, students, and faculty. What if one day, then, there is an issue with an administrator? I've dealt with an ombuds person from an outside agency with my grandmother's nursing home. I would not have felt comfortable had she been, had this ombuds person been an employee of the nursing home. I'm worried the natural relationship between the ombuds person and the administration will inhibit many, especially classified staff, untenured faculty, student workers who don't have job security, from making any claims. This is a full-time salary position with an office staff. Again, how many complaints or cases are we talking about? I didn't realize there are now so many complaints at PCC. Looking at the job duties, most of these bullets on page 11 are not tasks, but rather skills. It seems the only tasks would be to provide information to the public and conduct workshops, but how many per month are we talking about? Consult with the various parties and administration, attend campus meetings, and supervise his or her staff. By the way, is whistleblowing really an issue at PCC? Do we deal with government secrets here? I'm not sure it would merit a full-time position, especially when PCC already has groups and policies in place to handle issues. As Eduardo said, the Faculty Association handles grievances. I'm assuming the Staff Union has something similar. The Board has extensive sexual harassment policies, and when there are other issues to attend to, we are to work our way up the chain of command via our deans, HR, and beyond. When students have problems, I'm assuming they would go to the student reps and/or deans. Are there gaps in these existing procedures? If so, why not fill them instead? Or are these policies not being followed, and if so, why not? Why doesn't the existing structure work? If there is a perceived insensitiveness, as is stated as a rationale in the packet, why not train staff to be more sensitive, or change the staff? Is there already cronyism or people not being held accountable that we don't have an apparatus for addressing our concerns? Again, I appreciate the need to attend to on-campus disputes, but maybe students need this more than others. Another task from the ombuds person is to direct us to the right person. That's not that complicated, but that can be more so for students. If we follow the chain of command, and if those in the chain of command are being held accountable, I'm not sure what the problem is. If still people don't know who to talk to about what issue, why not create a printed guide rather than create a full-time position? Perhaps there should be an ombuds person from each peer group, a student ombuds person for the students, and faculty for faculty member, and so on, that a faculty ombuds person would, faculty member would be a faculty ombuds person, and so on. But still, why the existing structure doesn't work should be carefully analyzed. I would like to request that the board demonstrate before voting, first, the statistical need for this position, what exactly the procedures are now, and current flaws in the process, and find out whether faculty, students, staff would be, would utilize the service, and if they see the structure as being sound and impartial. It may behoove the board to, to get to the real root of the problem, legal expense, lack of trust on campus, or a general feeling of inhumanness, rather than offer a recurring cost, Band-Aid solution that in the end may not do the trick and be more expensive than necessary. Thank you.
Were there any other requests from the audience on this? Okay, so, then, wait, wait, wait. Everybody turn your lights off. It's too bright. We got the, we got the, it's the audience, and then it's the official presentation, and then, because they may answer some of the questions. It's possible here. Give them a chance. Okay? So, Dr. Rocha, and you're up.
Thank you, President Martin. I appreciate the comments, and I trust that many of the comments will be addressed in the presentation. I would call Executive Director Terry Hampton to the podium.
And I will only stand behind her because she's having some visionations, and I need to help her.
And as they're gathering, they will not read out to you the whole material that was in the board. I would say simply this, this is a recommendation of our Human Resources Department, an independent recommendation, and let me just make a couple prefatory comments for the public record. This comes as a part of the board's annual goals to increase compliance throughout the college. The immediate need for it came, not with certain kinds of complaints that have been referred to, but came from students who were not confident that they had a clearinghouse, a separate clearinghouse apart from administration, to render complaints of all types. Now, what is a complaint? A complaint is not, "I don't like that person, we don't like this policy." A complaint is an allegation that someone in the college has violated a policy, okay? Most of the complaints that the college receives, and we don't divulge them because they're confidential, okay, is, are these. Sexual harassment, most of the time from students. Discrimination complaints, which include ADA complaints, okay, which are extremely important from a liability situation, that every single individual, employee, and especially students who has an ADA complaint. In other words, an ADA complaint is, wait a second, I don't think you are conforming to federal ADA policy. That's a complaint, okay? The most, the largest number of complaints are what we would call grade appeals and other complaints against faculty, and those complaints currently come to administrators, okay? And students have often complained that, that they complain about, you know, the grade appeal, whatever it is, but that the action is too slow, and that there is often no action or no report back to the student. Finally, as to the operational issue, I should say, most of us probably have worked in a college that has an ombuds person, or an ombudsman. It is a very common, healthy kind of thing for college campuses. I certainly have not insisted, this is HR's recommendation, that it report directly to the president, but it would operate similar to general counsel. You would never have an ombudsman, ombuds person, report directly to the Board of Trustees because the Board of Trustees is the final trier of fact, and so the Board of Trustees cannot be involved in an investigation or an operation that leads to a possible discipline or something of that nature. Finally, I'd say what we're asking you to approve tonight, not an ombudsman in an office, but the ability to, and the work that Terry Hampton and Julie and others have done, I think is extraordinary. Finally, I'd say that the, what we're asking you to do tonight is to approve us continuing to move forward with a search process, because many of these questions, since an ombuds person is a very, very common thing at many college campuses, one of the ways that you answer many of these very, very good detail questions is to bring candidates who have experience in this area, and then we always ask candidates, "What do you suggest that we put in operationally in order for you to succeed?" Okay? So, that's the question that is, is out there a bit. So, I just wanted to, you know, offer that, and to also thank HR, because one of the things that the board has enabled us to do this year is to just basically reinvent HR under Terry's leadership. Julie's there, you approved a promotion in HR today, which we're so happy about, and HR had a wonderful ice cream social today, so they're, they're hitting it. So, Terry, you know, you see the report. Terry is available as a resource for questions and discussions.
Okay, so, do you want me to open it up now to the board, or is Terry...
Terry, is there anything else that...
Say something else that you may have missed, or...
That you want to point out before we go to the board questions and discussion?
Well, just very quickly, I want to say that part of the reason that we are doing this is because we want everyone, every constituent of this organization, of this entity, to know where they can go to have their matters appropriately addressed. A lot of the time, what we find is that individuals choose to say or do nothing to address their issue because they don't know how to go about doing it. And so, the creation of the Office of the Ombuds Person would enable us to have a place for everyone to go to have their issues addressed. They could go to the Office of the Ombuds Person to obtain information on policies and procedures, to get information on how to approach a subject, to get clarification on whether or not there really is an issue. Any concern that they might have, they would be able to address through the Office of the Ombuds Person. That individual would not conduct investigations, they would not be an advocate for or against any particular party, but instead, they would be advocating for a fair and equitable process. What deeply concerns me is whenever there is a situation where a person feels that their issue has not been addressed, so they choose to leave the organization, or they continue to remain unhappy and communicate with others that they're unhappy, but they never talk to individuals that can help them address the issue and perhaps change the circumstance. So, the idea of creating the Office of the Ombuds Person was to provide our constituents with a resource so that they could address their issues. Now, I prepared a presentation, but I won't go through the process of going through that presentation because I know that you have all had an opportunity to review the information that I provided to you, and so now, whatever questions you might have, I'm happy to try to address, to try and address.
Okay. I thought, and I read this while Dr. Rocha was talking, I thought it was nicely done, and thank you. I can't imagine which light came on first, but we're all going to get our turn, so if I, if I call it wrong, you'll forgive me. I'm going to start with trustee Wa.
Yes, I had an opportunity to, to ask questions and to get additional information from Ms. Hampton and from Vice President Miller. So, I also have to say that most large organizations I've worked in always have an ombudsman, and I think it's a good, healthy kind of a office to have, so people can feel that there's a safe place, a safe person to come and talk about their concerns. But I think the key is, it has to be a safe place, and it has to be, there has to be trust built into that. And so, I've seen the ombudsman office work very, very well in almost all circumstances. There are a few circumstances where I've seen it not work well, and, and that is where there is a lack of trust. So, my concerns are on the governance and the reporting structure. I think that for faculty to faculty, staff to staff, student versus faculty, those kinds of issues, I think that an ombudsman office works very well. Oftentimes, the ombudsman reports up to the HR, then reports in through the general manager, the CEO, I guess in this case. And, and certainly, I think that we as a board would not want every issue that comes before the ombudsman to come before us. But I do worry that, for example, if there are complaints against our president, I don't, I think that in the interest of fair, of creating an atmosphere of fairness and transparency, I don't know that it would be perceived as a trusted, safe way if the ombudsman office reports directly into the president. And so, what I had recommended is that we look at, first of all, I said, perhaps one of the things we should do is look at a contract service from a neutral party for one year to see whether or not we have enough complaints, and then to start to establish that trust before we put in an ombudsman, an office of an ombudsman that's part of our employee group. But, you know, another alternative could be, we could hire this ombudsman, but also have a contract mediation or ombudsman service for higher-level complaints, which then should maybe not go, if it's about the president, we should protect our president, and we should make sure that he is protected from any perceptions of unfairness, or hands-on involvement, or, so that we can ensure as much transparency and fairness as possible. So, I did get the figures and the, on the cost of what that would be from Ms. Hampton, and I think it was, what, $125 an hour is what you estimated, and...
Yes.
Yeah, and you estimated, what, 1,500 hours based on the number of complaints you thought we would have, or based on what?
Based on the number of complaints that we have had over the course of the past year, and the number of hours that outside investigators have spent addressing those issues.
So, $185 is what you quoted, I think, for an annual cost. So, anyway, I...
$185,000 annual cost using a contract, contracted service. Okay. Answers one of the questions.
Right, right. So, anyway, I, I hope that we will consider some additional, maybe routes for particular kinds of circumstances to ensure that we always have that, that path of trust, so that it always does go through this one route. I do agree that there could be a perception that if the complaint is against our president, it goes to the president, might not be as fair, so we want to protect... it goes to the president, might not be as fair, so we want to protect that interest.
Certainly.
Okay.
Just let me say, so that we can clear up these questions, it's not my recommendation that it reports to me. In fact, if, in a, in a model that you recommend, that it's normative, I prefer there wouldn't because I don't need the extra work. And I agree that, you know, you should have the trust and so on. So if, I just want the board to know that you can't have operationally somebody report directly to you because it implicates you in, it implicates you in operations that you can't be involved in. At the same time, we want you to know that we want you to look at the proposal, you know, can go forward with it, and that there is no insistence on the part of the administration that it report to me. You can either report to Terry, whoever Terry feels that, you know, should be done. Because again, there's models for this. This is not, we're not walking over a cliff here, you know, this is, so I just wanted to do that, that I-
So you're recommending a report to Terry, and Terry's recommending a report to you. So, okay.
I'd like to know if this-
Okay, we're going to get, okay, so your points, we'll take, and I think you made some good points. Let's get everybody else going here. Trustee Thompson, I'm going to let you go next, and then we'll get somebody on this line.
Question, has this gone through the shared governance process, this recommendation?
The creation of the position, of the position, no, it hasn't, not yet.
Why not?
We are still working through the process, and we want authorization to move forward with creating an entire program. And then taking that along with the policies that we are developing to, through the shared governance process. Because there are a number of policies and procedures that go along with it.
Isn't this discussion this evening premature?
No.
You know, how can we possibly vote to-
I don't, I don't think so.
How can we vote to create an office until we know what the person is going to do and answer the questions that have been raised by different of our government entities?
Well, I think we've identified what the person will do. Because it's laid out in the documentation that I provided to you.
If, if I may, the action item is proposed ombudsman or ombuds person, and the, I think the purpose of this evening is to bring to the board the possibility of this, get the board reaction, which we are clearly getting. If in fact, you say move forward with this, then we would begin the process of developing the office and bringing back to the board whatever specific information needed. Obviously, President Cairo has raised some issues and concerns, so in our process, we would try to address those concerns, et cetera. Okay, keep going, Trustee Thompson.
No, I mean, I, again, I think we have the cart for the horse here. How can we possibly vote to recommend that you create the Office of the Ombuds Person until we have all these other issues raised and answered, or at least addressed satisfactorily? So, I mean, it just, uh-
And you may not, but we're getting, we're getting guidance, we're getting feedback as to how you want us to proceed.
Well, one thing, Trustee Thompson, I appreciate it, we could, I'm happy to take it back to shared governance and, you know, again, we will be, you know, shared governance, all due respect, you know, it will take quite some time. And in the meantime, we have an urgent need to meet compliance. So we're going to continue to hire outside investigators ad hoc, or, this is a management position, by the way, this is not a faculty or a classified staff position, so it is within the purview of management. The shared governance for, for what we're asking for tonight is the floating of a position and the authorization to move forward with a search, which is itself a shared governance process. Because every member of the college constituency participates in the search, the senate, the students, the faculty, the classified, and so on and so forth. So that's the way that, that the shared governance would normally go forward on a management position. And then actually, again, and as I, you know, from, from my perspective, and I'm not, you know, again, this is not a, you know, one of those die on the hill issues, but from my, my perspective, that whether it's an ombuds person, HR person, or a lawyer, that you do a search for the best person you can find, and you have that person make the recommendation for how you set up the office. And then that goes through shared governance. So I think the questions are-
Well, let's, let's, we got to get everybody, some, everybody wants to speak on this, so let's let Mr. Thompson conclude his other questions besides why we were talking about this, and then let everybody else get their questions, so.
No, I, I, I would defer this until we really have the whole picture to present to us and be able to have a thorough discussion on that and make intelligent action.
Okay, we're going to call on Trustee Fellow next.
Yes, thank you. I'm just interested, would it, would an ombudsman also be like an ethics officer monitoring, you know, faculty and staff, I believe have to take sexual discrimination courses every two years or something? Would this person be in charge of making, monitoring that and making sure this happens? Or?
No, they would not. In fact, we have an equal employment opportunity compliance program that is responsible for that. And just as an example of that, our managers and supervisors, as you just stated, are required to take sexual harassment training every two years pursuant to the guideline set forth in AB 1825. And we are going through the process of having managers and supervisors take that training now through an online process. And so that is a function that would be handled by our equal employment opportunity program, which was, which resides in our human resources office. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Brown?
Sure, thank you. So I am a little not so comfortable with this. And the reason I'm not very comfortable with it is just for things that have been said already, as far as the reporting structure. You guys know what we've been through last year, most of our complaints, legitimate or not legitimate, they're all being tossed to administration. For you to have a safe haven to launch a complaint, you have to be comfortable. So I, I would like to see this possibly done, but if we could figure a way how that administration would not be the reporting door for the complaints. Folks, when you complain, if it is or not against whomever it is in administration, you want to feel comfortable, and I can assure you, there would be no level of comfort there. So what we need to possibly do is maybe think of other ways. I think Linda short of threw something out. I am not sure what would be the way to do this, but definitely, as it stands, that wouldn't be something I support as it is. I think it's a good thing we need it because we have complaints of all the other, the sexual harassment, discrimination, management harassing, you know, you all know the whole thing. But people have to have a way to complain. But where do you complain and not feel that you are being retaliated against, or, you know, those are important to people. So the idea is good, but I think we need to figure what is the right way to do it.
Okay, Trustee Fraser.
I have the benefit of sitting here with you every month, but I also have the benefit of being on the ground with students who go through these, these problems. And for students, you know, for discipline issues, if a student is being disciplined, I think maybe four to five clicks on the website will take you to how you manage a complaint against a student. So if you've been kicked out of class for not behaving, it's relatively easy to find how that process works. For a student to complain, however, it's on the website somewhere, I think I found it once in the 20 times I tried, it's a maze. You know, the, the information that comes out is very confusing. Talk to the dean, talk to the faculty member, talk to a different faculty member, go to human resources, and frankly, tell a student to go to human resources, they give up. And so we don't have anywhere right now, there is no defined processes for student complaints. And frankly, a lot of students just don't bother. You know, they think, oh, I'm in a class with a, a faculty member who is harassing me or has done something inappropriate, or I've had a bad experience at a counter where I had something bad happen. That happened to me once, and I didn't complain because I figured, well, I'm probably never going to see that person again, or it's only seven weeks till the end of the semester, I'll just ride it out. What that allows is then the bad behavior to continue, unchallenged. Because then a new crop of students come in, they go to the counter, it perpetuates. New students come into the classroom, and if they keep thinking, oh, I'm just going to keep rolling, I'm just going to wait over, you have a turnover of new students that come in, have a problem, and it's never really addressed. The ombuds person is frankly, I've read the whole proposal, and I think it's very good because it gives a central office, it gives a central place that is relatively friendly, we can very clearly define a process around it that then says, this is where you go. And then they can be the signpost to how to figure it out. And the one thing we don't have is any kind of what I call victim support. You know, when, if I, if you make a complaint with the police, for example, usually there's an officer who's assigned to not judge the complaint, not to say, oh, yes, this, what this person, if you were robbed on the street, how terrible that is, and he should be punished. But they do provide that emotional support, the, how can we help you complain, how can we make you feel safe complaining? Here's the five steps that you need to go through this, and by the way, I'm going to talk you through feeling good about it. And that you feel safe doing that, and you're going to, you're not going to be confronted with a brick wall, a complaint brick wall. And that's what happens, I feel, if you are told to go to human resources, where now, well, someone's job's on the line, you're not going to want to be there, that's a, a bad negative feeling. Or you feel like you're going to be judged by a dean who has managerial control over that person. And maybe they will say, oh, that faculty member shouldn't be teaching anymore, so again, you've injured a livelihood, there's negative feelings around it. You know, we signed, we approved a safe zones resolution, I, I think this goes a long way to implementing it. I think that you have some very legitimate concerns about upper management issues and how complaints get dealt with there, but I think that those can be figured out while we're getting this process off the ground, because it's needed. You know, for every complaint that I think goes through the system, there are probably dozens that don't. And when complaints do come out, and they do come out sometimes, and they're, they're gossiped about and they're heard, you know, this campus is big, but it, news travels and people talk, and sometimes students feel put on a spotlight unfairly tried by the public, there's no support system. And I think by, by moving forward with this tonight, we send a message that we're going to prevent that from happening. I think the operational weeds can be figured out, and I think that, that there are some very good questions on that. But I would hope that as a board, we say that we want our students especially to feel safe, and this office, whatever proposal we move forward with, will provide that safe space.
Trustee Mann?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to keep my comments brief. First of all, I worked at Cal State Northridge for 24 years and was head of faculty and diversity. We, the university did not have an ombuds person, and so I, part of my job actually was to do that, particularly the informal mediation part. So I have a really good understanding of how this, how this works, I think. So I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I don't think it works at all if the person reports to anyone other than the president, because if they report, say, to Dr. Bell, then their, their supervisor is involved with the faculty in that. They need to be at the highest, highest level. I don't think that the role of the ombuds person is to resolve complaints about or against the president. That would, that, I mean, that, there's lots and lots of other complaints, particularly what Simon was talking about. And actually, what you have to have here is, you have to have a person who can come in and build trust, so the students trust them, the faculty trust them. It's very clear in here that the ombuds person does not handle anything involving group contract, contracts and grievances, so that's how they would work with the, with the union. So I, I support this. The only question I have is, would the ombuds, could we structure this so that the ombuds person could also receive complaints against contractors? Because there, we have had complaints against contractors, and I know it, when I was at Cal State Northridge, I could not handle complaints against contractors because it wasn't against employees. So I think that's an issue that we ought to look at, particularly when you have construction and you have a lot of construction workers on, on campus, you often do have, have complaints of inappropriate, inappropriate behavior.
Okay, Trustee Vaughn?
First off, Terry, have, have you ever worked in an organization that's had an ombuds person? Do you have experience with this?
No, I have not. I, I had to do a lot of research on it.
Okay, so it's still fairly new for us, so we're going to have to be very, very careful on the implementation, and counting on, on if we do that. I want to reassert some of the things, when I was board president and Dr. Roach and I talked about it, this, this actually did come up through the students, and Simon and I even had a meeting almost two years ago talking about this, that classified staff and, and people who are represented by collective bargaining units have built-in advocacy structures through which they can pursue something. There is no such structure for a student that there's, there's an advocate. I, I wish they could be seen as an advocate for students and, and perhaps even if we, but we want to make it sure it's open to all the campus community, but I would almost feel like students would even more likely if they said it was a, we called it a student, student ombuds person, so that they would know, this is for students to do that. And so I'm generally in favor in seeing also that this did come up through students, not just Simon, but others had mentioned it to me, that they didn't feel that there was somebody they could turn to. And for the fact that people, that they're saying it's not going to be effective if it reports to the president, anybody who sat in this chair knows that, that there is seemingly no reluctance to, to lodge a verbal or written or phone call complaint against the president of this institution. And so if there's a sense that somehow people would, are intimidated from doing that, I haven't experienced it in, because I, we, I have fielded many such things. And then we as trustees act as ombuds people in ways that, to field confidential requests or concerns or situations, and then try to resolve them in a way that, using our own best judgment. So, so I would generally support this, but I, I, I am concerned about our implementation of it in a way that's effective, given that we, very few of us actually have hands-on experience of, of setting that up and, and working within it, too.
Okay, thank you, I guess that brings it to me. I think there's some, so I view these things concept down and details up, and those have to work together. So let's talk concept down, because that's what you're basically doing, and I think very appropriately floating the concept. When I read the materials, what came to my mind was a informal or an equivalent to what the legal system would be a mediator, where rather than engaging an enormous amount of formal time and attorney's fees and whatnot, a professional who knows what they're doing can get two parties in a room, or in separate rooms or whatever, and work through an issue and have both people get to the word yes and be happy with it, so that no formal thing has to ever happen. So though there is a cost to it, there is also a cost not to it. Now, whether one justifies the other or not, or the amounts, you know, I don't know. I'm intrigued with the idea of trying it on a contract basis, whoever we hire on a contract basis through a competitive process would certainly automatically bring the skills and experience and all those kinds of, some of the questions we were asking right along with them, because that's what those kinds of institutions and firms do and have done, and have tremendous amount of experience doing. I appreciate the discussion, and I, in particular, appreciate the discussion because I think the question was raised, that we, whichever way we go, we need to know what it is going to cost us before we pull the trigger. And I appreciate the discussion because it, it, especially from the student trustees comments, I can see where this is very student-centric, which is important. And it does answer the one question, that if you can answer this question, you don't have to worry about any other questions. And that is, if you don't know where to go, go there. If, if you answer only one question, and that's the answer, all other questions can be answered, because this person knows how to direct them. So it seems like it creates a very simple answer to every problem, when in doubt, if you can't find it or you don't know what to do, you, there's a person you can go to who will at least help you know where to go. So I would see there's some, some value to that. So on a conceptual basis, I am really warming up to the idea of what this person can do, the amount of formal time and process that can be solved, I can think of- I can think of so many situations where if you can just get the student's story and get to a teacher, and you can just talk to the teacher and hear back and forth, you know, we're there, right? It's just, we didn't quite get it, and it's not communicated, and this person might be able to facilitate some of that in an informal way, and if it doesn't work, there's always the formal way. So I'm intrigued with the concept, but there certainly are some details to be worked out. I'm gonna look to Dr. Rocha and ask, based on the comments heard, and a lot of great comments here, and rather than talking it to death tonight, if, if there was a majority of the board that would like to see this move forward, it isn't necessarily hiring a person, maybe a contract, maybe something, but like the concept, what would be your recommendation on a motion that would allow it to move forward so that you and others can work through the details and answer some of the detailed questions that were raised?
All right, thank you. First of all, I, I think specifically what we're, what we would ask the board tonight, and what we would appreciate, is the board's approval of being able to go forward and commence the recruitment and the search for such a person. If we were to start tomorrow, it could take us four or five months before we were able to come back to the board with a, with a candidate, which the board would, of course, have full authority to approve the appointment. And in that time, that experience will enable us to actually go out and address these, you know, situations and, and questions that have been very well raised. That's why we wanted to put it on the agenda tonight, is because we wanted to get going with it and, and hear what everybody had to say. And this has been a wonderful opportunity for us to hear the, hear the board and our colleagues, because that's what board meetings are about. This is, this is part of consultation. So I, I would hope that the board would authorize us to go forward. I'd also say, I'd also remind the board that, that this action also comes out of, and I'm speaking in confidence, of, of investigations that occurred last year of student complaints, and that the resolution of them required, actually, that the, that HR come forward to you tonight, as it did, to say, okay, since it seemed like in some investigations there was a gap between what we wanted to do and what we should have done, and all of that was in, you know, closed session that, you know, and, again, we don't divulge complaints, the board charged the administration and Ms. Hampton to go forward and bring, and basically bring this recommendation back tonight, which is why you have it. And then, so I do think the board retains its complete, by authorizing, authorizing us to, to begin the recruitment, we can at least get to work. I'd be more than happy, we will work out all the, you know, the details of reporting lines, be more than happy to have the executive director return and give a fuller report about the updates, about what's, what's going on out there. I mean, we might go out with recruitment in two or three weeks and find out there are no candidates, or no, no viable candidates. And finally, I should say that we already have an ombuds woman. And that person is general counsel, or, or ombuds women's, you know, women, that person is Terry Hampton, okay? And so they already are receiving these complaints from students and others, okay? And it's not appropriate for the HR person, or for that matter, general counsel, to be both the receiver of the complaint, the investigator of, of complaint, and the recommendation to the board or, or the appropriate administration about what to do. So I do think that this is a, a, a very, very worthy proposal. I'll grant that we have some work to do with details, and our colleagues will be fully involved in the search process that is the full consultation on any management position, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna entertain that motion, but with the understanding, because one of the suggestions was not just to focus only on in-house employees and staff, but as part of that search, I would hope you would at least look into the suggestion of what might be contracted
Sure.
as another possibility. So I'm gonna ask the board, I'm gonna entertain a motion to, to support the administrative position to move forward with the search and concept, to see if we have a majority of the board that's interested in doing that at this time. And if not, then we don't, so you won't. So is there someone who would entertain that motion?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have the motion by trustee Fraser, second by trustee Dr. Mann. So discussion on that motion. Okay, Mr. Thompson.
Can we have as a part of that, that after the job description is put together, that that be brought back to us for approval, and also for a discussion as to how all this is gonna fit together, and hopefully by that time, too, some of the questions raised by different government entities can be addressed and either answered, or at least be a part of that discussion.
As long as we can put that on consent.
Bad joke, okay, that was a.
It'll only take about 45 minutes to talk about it, so what the heck.
Doesn't matter where we put it, we'll have a long discussion, won't we? So I, I think that was an indirect yes.
We, trustee Thompson, we have no problem with that. I think all Terry and staff wanna do is to be able to get to work on this, and we'll be glad, glad to come back.
Okay. So any further discussion on, yeah, go ahead, trustee Brown.
No, just for my clarification, what exactly are we moving on?
Well, we're authorizing the administration to move forward with the proposal. They'll probably float out a job description and try to get better definity on the roles and responsibilities. I hope they're gonna look at contract people. I think they're gonna start the campus process with the other groups on the general discussion of the topic, and they're gonna come back to us with, at some point, we hope, a more comprehensive and thorough total recommendation, which may or may not have a name next to it, but will have dollars next to it and all those kinds of things, so.
So we are discussing that we will give administration approval to create a job description?
Well, we've already, yes, and, and thanks for the question. We've already created a job description, but there's been some questions on it. So what we're asking authority for tonight is to move forward on beginning the search and recruitment process, and that we will come back, you know, because it takes some time to prepare all of the materials for, for a search process, it takes having a committee, it ta, you know, all, you know, all of this. And to come back to the board, before we throw the switch, you know, on, okay, now we're gonna put it on the website and out we go, we'll come back for a final authorization. So step one is authorize us to move forward and prepare for the search and recruitment, and step two will be, at the future date, authorize the position itself.
So your search and recruitment will entail, A, someone that will be brought on board, or B, it would entails that we find a contract person? Is that what I'm understanding or not?
Well, I, I think we'll come back with our recommendation. We've heard, you know, and I think we'll have to do some research as to whether this would be, some positions yield candidates as an employee base, you know? Typically, again, which is not to say we won't look into a contract person, but some positions are very, very difficult to find unless you have an employee position with benefits and so on. There aren't too many consultants who are just, you know, ombuds people. But yes, we will bring that all back before we say we're about to push the button on the website for recruiting this position.
Got it.
Okay.
Mr. Bar, could I just make one comment? I, I was going to say, again, having had experience doing this, I think it, in a college campus, it's very different, it'd be very difficult to have a contractor unless they understood the role of the faculty, the way faculty governance works, so I think it would be better if we first of all look for an individual, and if we don't yield it, then see about, be it contractors. It, 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 someone, if, the more experienced a person has had in a collegial setting, I think the easier they're going to be able to figure out how to do this job and establish good working relationships with the faculty, which is critical if it's going to work at all.
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. I'll look to the advisory vote and the remainder of the board. Okay, so the advisory vote is affirmative, and it passes six to one, and I think if I'm lining my lights upright, it's Doc, it's trustee Brown is voting no, right?
Right.
Okay. So, thank you. We are on item I, institutional effectiveness.
Okay, I'd ask, uh.
John, may I ask a question? Not, not to cut Dr. Rocha short here, but we've got, what, four or five more items here that, I'm just wondering, are we gonna, do we need to take all of these this evening? If so, which ones? Because I've got a 6:00 AM flight tomorrow morning of Maliaque I gotta take, and I don't wanna be here till 2:00 in the morning.
I don't think we'll be here till 2:00, but I'm not gonna promise anything before 11:00, that's for sure.
I'd say, and, and believe me, trustee Thompson, I'm with you, I, I don't have a flight, but I'd like to get home. Institutional effectiveness, that's a required pro forma, you have all the data, that should take, unless you have questions, that should take about 30 seconds, okay? Item J is a very important pro forma item that you do every quarter, and we need to transmit the financial report. That should take another 30 seconds.
K.
The K will take a little bit of time, but I think we can get it down to the one or two salient points. L, no time, you have my report in writing on shared governance. So I think we can, if we're not gonna
Yeah.
get into long discussions, we can move pretty quickly.
I, I really think we can do it. So, and after tonight, far be it for me to not talk about one of the items on this agenda and hear about it next time. Okay, so let's go institutional effectiveness.
Yeah, I just, in, in calling, uh, Crystal to the podium and thanking her, if you see the report, it is a copious, fully prepared report. I won't ask Crystal to go through it, because I trust that you have read it carefully. Basically, there are two aspects of this report. One is that it is a legal requirement, the chancellor, there used to be an ARC report that we used to have to give you, and you used to have to vote that you've seen it and received, received it and seen it, okay? And that's what we're doing tonight, is that you've received it and seen it. There are no other actions other than for you to approve that you've received and seen this report. We can discuss at a later date the implications of the report, which I would boil down to a sentence like, we need to do better, okay, to graduate students. And that's my report, if the trustees have questions.
Okay, so is there any color that you wanted to add to that?
I could add a lot of color.
In three seconds or less.
No, actually, there's, just to say that this year's scorecard is so rich in data, it was actually challenging to distill it down for you into a seven-page report and then to the slideshow. So I realize there's a lot of information here, so if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. But it's a lot more than you've ever gotten before from the ARC report.
Okay, trustee Fraser, you can warm us up.
I'll be brief. I, I hope that this is something that we discuss at the retreat, because I think that, you know, with our Project 90 goals and our AA degrees, I, I noticed that we're not, we're declining when we wanted to be increasing in our AA degrees. That's worrisome to me, and I think there are many reasons for that, and so it would be nice when we come to the retreat to maybe have an opportunity to talk about why this is and how we can get more students, not only to transfer, but also to get that associate's degree as well. I think that a lot of students transfer and don't complete every single little bit to get that AA degree, that's kind of been my experience. And that's just apocryphal, though, then it would be nice to have some data to back that up. And the other thing that I hope we'll talk about at the retreat is the achievement gap. There's a very, you know, I was at the CCL conference, and one of the things that the Association of Student Trustees has a set as their goal, is to work on best practices that would close that achievement gap by 2% through the year. It's an ambitious goal, we think it's one that's possible, and I, I think PCC, we've done a lot of this, sort of the groundwork already, I think we could do it if we, we really put our minds to it. So my main, you know, I think that those are my main concerns, would be those associate's degrees, getting them sort of up to where our Project 90 goals really should be, and then our basic skills completion rate, which isn't bad when you look at the rest of the colleges, right? I mean, we're doing pretty well compared to everyone else, but not great if you just look at us. Am I right in thinking that?
You are reading that correctly.
Okay, Adam, then.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Vaughn.
I just wanted to say how proud I was to see the results that Pasadena City College produced. I'm never gonna say we're, we're gonna, ready to rest on our laurels, particularly with students who enter PCC and not ready to do college-level work. We're, we're doing, we're leading the pack in actually trying to get those students ready for college and, and succeeding once they get here. It's, we're nowhere near where we need to be, but we're doing something that, that has set us apart from our peer institutions, and I hope that we're continuing through SASE and others to identify those programs and projects that actually lead to higher success rates for under-prepared students, and, and then use that as a model, share with the rest of the state.
Okay, yes, Professor Kyron.
Thank you. A question, Crystal. I know that in a previous information given regarding the certificates, that under the target and actual dates, the numbers were higher, and I noticed that here they're lower. What would explain why we've lowered the targets and the actuals from what they used to be, I think like 1,300, and now they're down to 832, something like that?
When we originally produced the target numbers for the certificates, we included this nefarious little category of the AS degrees that were called liberal arts certificates that were associated with degrees. We had to back those out and revise the targets for the certificates, so we actually were only looking at certificates of completion.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think at some point, whether at a retreat or some other time, you know, some kind of official assessment of what, you know, 'cause there's a lot of data here, and I read it, and we can all pick out this going up and down and the whole deal, but almost some kind of official assessment along with how that will eventually translate into revisions of action plans to.
We're planning to give that to the board at its retreat meeting.
Okay.
On which you base your annual goals.
Okay, so there you go.
Yeah.
You're thinking far ahead. Okay, so I think, unless, is that a light on or a reflection on there? Did you have a, is that, that's a reflection?
Reflection.
Okay, got it. So I think, I think we're gonna move on.
Well, we need to make a motion to receive the report, I believe.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Can we ask Crystal to email her presentation to us?
I think it's in.
Go ahead.
Could I just ask to make sure that you say you're receiving the scorecard? It helps me when I submit to the chancellor's office.
Well, you, you'll accept that, and you'll accept that in a second. And did you hear the request for an email version of this?
Absolutely.
Presentation.
Oh, I would love an email version of it.
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion, further discussion, advisory vote is affirmative, remainder of the board is affirmative unanimously, so thank you.
Thanks.
I move to authorize the transmission of the fourth quarter financial status report.
Second, second.
Okay, second by Dr. Mann. Any discussion? Advisory vote, remainder of the board carries unanimously with advisory vote. Thank you, trustee Vaughn. Okay, college budget development.
Okay, item, item K, I'd ask you to, Assistant Superintendent Miller is at the podium and at the ready to answer your questions. I'm gonna ask Assistant Superintendent Miller not to give his report, since it's all there in writing, and I'm gonna ask that, there are two pages that, that this report boils down to, and obviously any other questions that you have. First of all, keep in mind, this is budget development, okay? This is not an action item. Next board meeting on September 4th, two weeks from tonight, by law, we have to meet the deadline to give to the board a final approved, a final budget for your review and approval at the September 4th meeting. That is the so-called big book budget, okay? The line item by line item. So by, the big book that we're already working on is based on the assumptions in this budget development presentation. The two salient points that I can, that I boil it down to is that, is, I don't, the pages are numbered, but there is a, Bob, if you can go to the page that's how the 12.275838 is being spent, okay? Any? Keep going. Keep going, keep going. Back, back.
There it is.
There you go. Okay. The salient point is this. The difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is that this year's budget is $12.275 million more than last year's budget, okay? Everything else underneath that will more or less stay the same in the big book, because you can't just move off salaries and benefits and compensation for the people who are already here. So the increment or the delta is $12.3 million. This is basically what we're developing for you next time. This is how we propose basically budgeting, which is a plan for spending, not the spending itself, the $12.3 million. And there's 12 items on here, and so that's item one, okay? And we won't go through it, okay? You can see it for yourself. The next item, I think it's two slides in, all right, is the relationship of salaries and benefits to expenses. There you go. Okay. So these two slides are the most important slides in terms of our budget development for next time. If you look, that this slide says that as a percentage, all of our salaries and benefits for all employees, that the percentage of compensation as a percentage of income, that is top-line revenue, actually has gone up, and that is not a, that's something we have to bend the other way, because that's 90.22%. It went up very slightly, but we're still trying to bend that number the other way, because the guideline for accreditation is 85%. That's about where health lies. You can see also as compensation as a percentage of expense went down slightly, which is a good thing, but it went down slightly because we pulled our expenses down this year. And one of the things that's being reported in this copious presentation is the fact that we once again went under budget, that we spent about $2 million...
2.5.
...plus we pulled our expenses down, okay? So with all that, that is that.
Well, because he said that is that, I will say very, very little, other than to say that under item K, under item K, in the public record, under item K is a nine-page or so, seven-page or so narrative that provides great detail about our budget development on the state level, the community college system level, and our college level, plus those nine or so PowerPoint slides that provide greater detail. I will also say that the total amount of reserves for the district remains at a healthy level. The state requires 5%. We are sitting at, our $12,500,000 represents about 9.5%, and then our $6.9 million contingencies, another 5%. So we're sitting at roughly 14.5% to 15% reserves, which is roughly 10% higher than is required. And as Dr. Rocha mentioned, we are working to get the compensation as a percent of income down this year because of the board's generosity of staff and the increase in health costs and what have you. That bumped up, but we are trying to control it on the expense side, and we anticipate that as the situation brightens in the state economy and other things happen, that next year, this will be a little better picture. So with that said, again, you've had the material for a few days, and you're, any questions, I'd be happy to answer. And then next week, on the basis of this document, the full budget will come back to you for approval. That budget needs to be in the chancellor's office by September 15th. So at the next meeting on September 4th, we'll ask approval, and then we will transmit to the chancellor's office by the required date of September 15th. Okay, open to questions on the board.
I have a suggestion.
Do you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions?
I have just a suggestion.
Okay.
So my suggestion would be for our next meeting is maybe we could get our budget on one of our items first. This is very important, because at midnight, talking about the budget doesn't do us any good. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to mention, on other boards I sit on, they usually hold a special meeting just for the budget, because it's so important. I'd like to do that next year, either a special meeting or some kind of workshop.
Dr. Rocha. And I should mention that we will be having a meeting with the Budget and Technology Committee before the next board meeting, so we will be giving a very thorough briefing to that, to the board subcommittee. Now, I think we invite, do we not all the trustees? Can't they all be invited to come to that meeting? I think that's the way we were operating. We could do that, but then it becomes an open meeting, but we could certainly do that, right, counsel?
Yes.
Yes. So you'll let everybody know when the committee... Yeah, and then we'll post it. ...is meeting, and if others want to sit in, they can. And then we'll post the meeting, and it's a public meeting, yes. But at least the committee will make sure they're diving in for us. We can do that. Okay, any other questions? We'll move to report on college operations by the superintendent.
Yeah, the sum and substance of my report is the shared govern, the annual shared governance report, which is there in writing. I won't read it over, it's there for you. I would say it is an extensive document, and I also want to especially thank Dean Matt Jordan, who prepared it for the staff. And there you have it.
Okay, so we're on item M, and I get to officially welcome a hearty welcome, Jordan Roscoe as president. We've kind of done that already, but this was the time I was gonna say, glad to have you here, and Carlos Altamorano. Obviously, you guys have both made your presence felt already in a very meaningful way, so we thank you gentlemen for being here. And so we're, I'm gonna do this backwards so that, because you guys are, this is your first meeting, we'll start with Dr. Douglas and go through Wardo and then down to you. But this is our announcements by shared governance representatives.
Thank you, President Martin. The managers have been busy the last few weeks getting ready for the start of the semester. We also had the Management Association Annual Retreat about two and a half weeks ago, where we addressed lots of the issues that were, or items that were in the MOU that we recently came to. And we had a fabulous retreat yesterday with Dr. Rocha put on by Bobby and her group. And so we've accomplished a lot in the last two and a half weeks, as well as getting ready for the, for the fall.
Thank you. President Cairo.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Let me begin by saying that we too have been busy this summer, as we have participated in the process of forming various hiring committees. Our Academic Senate dropdown menu for faculty to submit their names to be on hiring committees is now up and running, very proud of that. Today, we sent our template to all division deans that they may follow when making a request for faculty to serve on hiring committees, committee volunteers, and we believe that these two actions will streamline the whole process. Finally, we are also working on revising our resource manual. However, unfortunately, not everything is good news. We are still having difficulties in finding faculty to participate in shared governance and hiring committees. The main reason for this, as I stated before during our last meeting, I won't repeat it here, is that faculty believe that after putting much time and effort, the administration completely disregards their efforts. Until this changes, Academic Senate will continue to be deprived of these talents. Over the past year, due to issues just mentioned, some of our shared governance committees did not meet or became ineffective, thus creating an academic procedural vacuum. We intend to fully support them and ensure that any and all current programs affecting faculty will pass through the academic shared governance committees. The executive committee believes that by doing this, we will take several steps forwards towards accreditation. Looking at tab L, which provides a summary of the significant issues on which the stated shared governance groups made progress last year, I noticed that under Academic Senate, it stated that an academic calendar was approved. A major importance is what was missing here, and that is that the district did not implement their recommendation. The same holds true for the Calendar Standing Committee, in which it states that the committee approved a 2013-14 academic calendar with a winter intercession. There is no mention that the recommendation was not implemented. To me, this is a case of misinformation, someone that is not aware...
I think, in all honesty, though, I think the people he was giving that to were pretty aware of it, just so you know. Because that was coming to us, and we obviously sat here and listened to all that, so he, I viewed that just more as a report of what...
Oh, okay.
You did something, you did do something.
Okay.
And not of...
I understand.
...to us, but, you know, he's just saying he did it. So, yeah, anyway, but keep going, I'm sorry.
No problem, thank you. What I'd like to point out here is that we just need to be more diligent in stating the complete story. So as was stated, this, in my opinion, this is not an extensive item. And one final point regarding this report is, I spoke to Jordan earlier, and I noticed that their vote in the conference was not included in the report. What I'm also finding disappointing is that the district did not contact the Academic Senate regarding this information. We should have been consulted. I understand that the associate students were also not consulted in obtaining this information, which brings me to our concern. The executive committee has been compelled to cancel all monthly CAPM meetings, Council on Academic and Professional Matter meetings, due to the administration's unwillingness to provide the Senate with requested information pertaining to the 400,000 SASE funds that were allocated for the Academic Senate. Two very simple questions have been ignored. Instead of answering our questions, Dr. Bell chose to provide information that was not requested. In an email, I stated, "Will the 400,000 SASE funds ever be deposited into Academic Senate's account? Yes or no?" Second question, "If the money were to be deposited, by what month and year?" Dr. Bell's response is as follows. "The process I outlined in my email of July 27th are the parameters that accompanied allocation of funds to the Academic Senate last academic year. As I stated, the intended purpose for SASE funds is to advance transfer AAAS degree, AAS STEM degree, and CT certificate attainment for students. There needs to be a clear and consistent process established in which faculty can apply and be awarded funds for projects. There also needs to be..."
And Cairo, we're, this is announcements now, so we're not really gonna kind of go into arguments and debates, you know?
My announcement then is that we, the executive committee, find the response by Dr. Bell to be very offensive. We are well aware that a process needs to be established. We are aware of the guidelines need to be followed, and we're aware of accountability. Under the direction of Academic Senate President Dustin Anvy, it was mentioned that an ad hoc committee needed to be formed to deal with these concerns. The current Academic Senate Executive Committee was in the process of doing so until we realized that we did not have the funds. This is what prompted our emails. Unfortunately, we still, to this day, we still don't have the answer. Our concern throughout all this matter is that there is still a lack of cooperation by administration, which we believe will ultimately affect our accreditation. But let me be very clear, that despite the administration's uncooperative stance towards Academic Senate, we will work diligently to do everything in our power to achieve student success and pass accreditation while trying to engender an environment where shared governance is the norm. Let me reassure the board trustees that the Academic Senate Executive Committee is not an obstacle to attain these two goals, and these are, that we are committed to achieve then. Thank you.
Okay, classified announcements.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Martin. We actually just have a few, one is at the Classified Center, also, we actually just had our retreat on the 16th, about a couple days ago, and I was fully attended and very productive, actually set goals and objectives for the rest of the year, one of which actually just happened on the 19th, which is our Classified Kickoff Day, which we worked alongside of the Academy of Professional Learning and putting off an event that many Classified staff fully enjoyed, the recognition of them, again, continuously working hard. We also announcing that we're having our next general meeting, only have two a year, on October 31st. Yes, it's Halloween. And the Board of Trustees, as well as Academic Senate and others, are invited to attend as well. And lastly, actually, I just added this one, based on a comment that Eduardo made, the Classifieds is also taking the lead from their website as far as adding the volunteer for hiring committees, as well as standing committees, to the Classified Center website as well.
Okay, great. And AS, welcome again and again.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give a brief update. AS just had its retreat this weekend, 16th through the 18th. We got a lot of work done, a lot of headstrong VPs, as well as leadership coming from the group. I'm really excited for this year, it's gonna be a really productive year. We got our mission statement going, so that's gonna be put up on our website as well. And mainly, we wanted to promote a campus of student, student-driven data, along with academic success data, so I'll be talking to Crystal and Matt on that. Basically, just getting ourselves known, and as well as getting data that's driven by student, from person to person, as well as surveys as well. So you're gonna be seeing a lot of us on campus, asking students questions, stuff like that. Please make sure you stop by Week of Welcome, we got a little, a couple activities going on, as well as Club Week, which will follow the Week of Welcome as well. So we're looking to get more campus involvement, as well as a community-based campus involvement, and we'll be working towards community and a collectivist campus, so. That's it.
Great. Trustee Fraser.
Thank you. I attended the opening, or the sneak peek, it's not really an opening of the Center for the Arts. It looks beautiful. I'm really excited for a lot of students to go in there, and I think the best bit for me was seeing one of the student performers who was doing the welcome performance, walk into the rehearsal space, and audibly gasp at just how big it was. So that was a fantastic reaction, I'm looking forward to people moving in there. I spent my weekend at the Community College League of California Retreat in Anaheim with the other student trustees. You know, the California Community College Association of Student Trustees has reformed itself. You know, the direction kind of went a little skewed for a while there, and, you know, so the trustees have really refocused on the longer-term goals of the state system, not trying to replicate the efforts of the Student Senate. That was a big issue that was brought up, and so the differentiations between the organizations. And, you know, it's very, it was very interesting to hear a lot of trustees really having the right attitude towards getting students to succeed, getting students and getting community colleges serving the right community. So it was a fantastic learning experience, I'm looking forward to putting it all into practice.
And I think some congratulations are in order, are they not? Yes.
Yes, I was elected as the student member to the Triple CT Board.
Pasadena. More representation. Thank you, Simon. Trustee Thompson.
No announcements.
Trustee Wa.
No announcements.
Trustee Fellow.
I want to wish my colleague Bill a happy trip.
Thank you, Tony.
Try to keep him here as long as you can, huh? Trustee Brown. Trustee Mann.
I just wanted to report that at the last meeting, a gentleman from my district came and raised some issues with the neighbors in the CEC, and I want to compliment the administration for getting on this, for meeting, for establishing kind of an ongoing process, a meeting with the neighbors and working with the city to try to resolve this. So I was very pleased with the quick follow-up on that, and I guess he's pleased, because I called him back to say, "How's everything doing?" He never answered, didn't respond.
No news is good news. Trustee Baum.
No report. No report.
Thank you. Okay, we are at, you know, I'm looking, there, it's on the next page, is our, trustee Baum, that future agenda item, but we're at future board meeting dates. Now, we made a correction on December, there's one meeting in December, it's the second Wednesday, it's the organizational meeting, I think that'd be December 11th. They got out on the second, go out on the agenda, but I think on the one here, it says the fourth, but that, make a note of that, that's our organizational meeting on the 11th. Okay, so you see the future board meeting dates there? Any questions or comments?
I have one comment.
Please.
I am happy to see that in September, I think I see two meeting schedule, and I think I see two in October. I appreciate not meeting every two times a month, but I am seeing that this may not be the best thing for the board, because our meetings go so long, and we're, from the moment I walk through here, we're push, 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 push. So I'm not sure we're doing great justice to our community, so I am not really so sure that this once-a-month meeting is really working well.
Okay.
In fact, are we not, are we canceling a meeting, a second business meeting in September? Because we're not on the first of the...
Plan was to make it, there's not a second business meeting, but there is the retreat.
Right, and this is the first time I've been noticed of the retreat. I won't be able to attend for the full day, I have a midday conflict there.
Around what time do you think you'd need to leave from us?
Around 11:00.
Okay, I, so I would be more inclined to starting earlier than we normally do, if people don't mind getting up early on a Saturday, just to...
We're making goals for the coming year, so...
Capture as much of your time as we can.
Till December.
So...
I would start at 8:00.
Let's go to future agenda items, and here's, in reflecting on trustee Baum's request on revisiting the fees.
That would be, yeah, my request for an agenda item would be to review in the policy and procedures that cover the student activity fee.
And let me, it's my understanding of your intention would be that a further study would hopefully lead to a reduction or... or possibly an opt-in.
I don't know, I think, I want to leave it open. I don't know, I disagree with some of the direction that we're saying, is that we have to say specifically what the, the administration can make a recommendation to the board. I just want the board to have an opportunity to discuss with possible action, a revision to the policy and the procedure that governs the student activity fee, without a specific-
The first thing I want to say is I would be totally in favor of that because I've been in favor of an opt-in for the fee all along. So you're gonna get my vote because that's what I want to see happen. But I'm also saying out to the board that if everybody is adamantly against the direction where this may go, that you and I may want to see it go, that we would serve the district and the students and the staff and everybody the time and effort that's gonna go into that in saying, "We don't need to see this come back." So as much as I'd like it to come back, because I want it to go in a different direction. Last time, a year ago, we battled on this, and battled's the wrong word, you know, we had a debate, and we lost. And I know there's an exorbitant amount of time that went into the report already, and there would be a lot more going into this. So I'm just asking those that aren't even open to it, if that's the case, let's just spare the district that-
Since this is my request, you're overinterpreting my request.
Okay, well, that's why I'm doing a-
This policy was enacted before many members of this board were on the board.
Okay, so can I stand corrected, it was longer ago?
A, to request for the agenda, a review of the policy, with discussion and possible action, and the procedures, so that we may decide, we may make, may consider making adjustments based on now that the, and I'm not want to debate it, I just want to say what, what I want to review the policy and procedures.
So can I ask you then, to not have to get board direction, you know, we would put that on as, because apparently, if several years have passed, and it's just seems like yesterday, that I would put that on as a normal, right-up-front request with an action, with possibility of action, if it doesn't involve considerable staff time.
I don't think it involves considerable staff time.
You think all staff time has already been done and in this report?
Believe so.
To facilitate your request. So then I don't need to ask them anything, I'm just gonna put it on the agenda when we get a chance to do so, as we would any other requests.
And I'm not prescribing which date you put it on the agenda, I just want to put it on the agenda for future consideration.
Okay, so that's noted, and will be put on the agenda as potential action item. So I appreciate that clarity.
I just need clarification. So I need to understand, so Trustee Baum wants to get the student fee revisited, correct? I was on the board when we did that, so it really wasn't that long ago, it's just been four years. But I don't understand why there's such urgency on it, when there are other items that people-
No, he's saying there's not.
Okay, so it could come up whenever, is that what you're saying?
Right, we're gonna try to schedule it like we do everything else, based on what the administration says is, you know, when the governor changes the budget, and boom, you're gonna see Roseme come up sooner than we thought, you know? So, but we're gonna just do it as we normally would do, what I, anyway, so I think we're there. Okay, so I appreciate that. And Dr. Mann?
Yes, I would, I recall that the last time as we were going into the self-study for the accreditation, and Crystal can, if she's still here, can verify this, yep, there she is. We developed a schedule for the review of the policies because we need to have, demonstrate that the board had actually looked at all of them in the recent, you know, like the year before. And so I think in order to make sure we don't have to spend one whole summer looking at all of them, it might be a good idea to put on the agenda a, developing a schedule for review of policies, and who would do it, and how we could do it in the most effective, effective manner. Do you see any problem with that, Dr. Roche?
We're on it. Crystal's leading the effort, Matt Jordan, the accreditation effort. In fact, she presented such a document, I think, two weeks ago. So we will surely put that-
Need to share it with us.
Yeah, that's right. And so we will surely put that on a agenda quite soon.
Trustee Fraser.
Just a quick report on how the financial aid, what's happening with financial aid right now. I know that someone at Public Comment mentioned changes to unit limits and so on, so just a report on outcomes of financial aid, how we're doing repayments, drop-offs, that kind of thing. I know we do one every so often, but I think maybe it's time to have a separate one.
Okay, so there's two ways we can handle that, based on your discretion here. If, if you think that request can be handled in 10 minutes or less by-
Dr. Bell.
Or somebody, you know, Kim Miles or somebody, have them shoot it out to all of us, and we're not gonna worry about it. If it is more extensive than that, it doesn't sound like that's what he's asking for, then I would agendize it. Without any administrative effort, we'll have a larger discussion, hone in on what you want, and decide whether to dedicate staff time to it. It sounds like from the request, and from your response, that we can get an answer to that in a short, one-page that you can get to use sooner, without having to try to work it on an agenda and talk about it at 11 o'clock some night.
And, you know, I think that the benefit of that would then be, if there are further issues that arise from it, then we can always bring it forward later, perhaps.
Right, okay, so I'm gonna ask you to facilitate that just administratively, okay? Good? Okay, any others? Great. I think we're at adjournment, we did it before 11:00. So, thank you all. See you again.